Good evening and welcome to the City Commission Meeting this Thursday, August 7th, 2025. It is 6 o'clock and we will open the meeting. We will have Adam Profit with Welcome and Outreach Minister, or he's the Welcome and Outreach Minister for First Christian Church, do the invocation and then followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, if everybody would please stand.
Let's pray together. Lord God, we're gathered in this space because we want to see our city become the city you have in mind for it to be, a place of flourishing for everyone who calls it home. Thank you for the leaders who give their time and energy to the leadership of our city, and thank you for the citizens who bring their voices, their concerns, and their hopes into these conversations. Thank you for the ways I've seen our city grow and change over the last 30 years. I'm grateful for the contributions of those of us who've lived here our entire lives and those of us who've moved here in recent years. All of us play a part in making our city what it is, and all of us are here because we want to do the best we can with the resources available to us. Each of us plays a part, each of us belongs, and each of us has a responsibility to shape our city. God, tonight I pray Isaiah 40 over our city. I pray we would make a level highway through our city for every neighbor, from the most impoverished neighbor in our city to the most affluent among us. I pray every valley would be raised up and every mountain flattened, metaphorically, of course, because our mountains are obviously very beautiful. I pray this, God, so that we would be known as a city defined by generosity and equity toward all our neighbors. God, may we work together tonight and each day to see your vision for our city realized. May we work for the good of our city and every neighbor who calls it home. May we deal with each other generously and equitably, and God, may your kingdom come and your will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Ball?
Commissioners, your first order of business is to consider approval of the minutes for the regularly scheduled City Commission Meeting held on Thursday, July 17th, 2025.
Any corrections, additions, or a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
Ms. Laughs.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Epstein.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
Ms. Ball?
Next order of business is proclamations, resolutions, and presentations. It's a presentation of a proclamation recognizing the month of September as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the City of Johnson City.
I'm going to read this proclamation and then I'll give the mic to you if you want to say a few words. Whereas suicide is a tremendous form of suffering and one of the most disruptive and tragic events a family and a community can experience, with more than 1,200 lives lost in Tennessee each year and an estimated 25 attempted suicides for each suicide death. And whereas suicide is the 12th leading cause of death in Tennessee, the third leading cause of death among those aged 10 to 24, as well as the fourth leading cause of death of adults aged 35 to 44, and the eighth leading cause of death for adults aged 45 to 54. And whereas understanding the risk of suicide can be reduced through awareness, education, and treatment. And whereas suicide prevention has been declared a state priority by Governor Bill Lee and the Tennessee Legislature. And whereas 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline provides 24/7 free and confidential support for people in distress, prevention and crisis resources for you or your loved ones, and best practices for professionals in the United States. And whereas a Suicide Prevention Network Advisory Council has been appointed to coordinate the implementation of the Tennessee Strategy for Suicide Prevention. And whereas the Tennessee Suicide Prevention Network, TSPN, is a grassroots collaboration of Tennesseans and organizations working in, working to eliminate the stigma of suicide, educate the community about the warning signs of suicide, and ultimately reduce the rate of suicide in our state. And whereas everyone can play a role in suicide prevention by learning about and sharing the risk and warning signs, decreasing the stigma as a means to promote help-seeking by talking about suicide using safe messaging and sharing the available resources. And whereas TSPN encourages all Tennesseans to become trained and play a role in suicide prevention to support quality of life. Now therefore I, John Hunter, Mayor of Johnson City, do hereby proclaim September 25th Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Johnson City, Tennessee, and encourage citizens to take the time to inquire about the well-being of their family and friends and to genuinely convey their appreciation for their existence by any gesture they deem appropriate. A simple phone call, message, handshake, or hug may go a long way toward helping someone realize that suicide's not the answer.
Thank you so much, Mayor. We appreciate all of your support, we really do, for all the commissioners up here, Dr. Fowler, you and Jeanne Brock, you've all been so supportive over the years. Important work we are doing, and having your support truly means a lot to us. We are working hard across the state of Tennessee to decrease the number of deaths. I don't know how many of you all know that we have a higher average in the state of Tennessee of suicides than the nation as a whole. And so we are working to get out the word about 988, that is our mental health crisis hotline. We want you to think about it, like 911 is for physical emergencies, 988 is for mental health emergencies. I'm blessed enough to be on this Advisory Council from Governor Lee, and we work all the time together to ensure that we've got money in all of our counties across this state to do this important work. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
We appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
7.1, which is ordinance 4920, an ordinance to adopt and certify Johnson City's Comprehensive Plan, Horizon 2045 Growth Management Plan, and it's Sylvan Bruni of 166 Garland Way.
And Sylvan, I know that you know the rules, but I'll read it as others are going to be speaking later. Public comment is limited to those who have signed up at least 12 hours in advance. Comments must be about an actionable item on the agenda. You'll have three minutes and there will be a timer for you. If you could state your name and then we'll start the clock.
Sylvan Bruni, 166 Garland Way. So I want to address the Horizon 2045 Plan, which outlines our city's path for growth over the next 20 years. This is really a big deal. It will shape how we live, how we work, how we invest in our city over the next two decades. And I generally support this plan because it gets many things right, in particular the process of involvement of the community upfront. There are still a few areas that need some attention and clarity from the Commission before you move forward. As always, I do have three questions for you. First, the public made its priorities clear during the upfront engagement process, and we want strong neighborhoods and healthy environments. Those are the two things that came out on top. And I want to reiterate that Bitcoin and crypto mining run counter to strong neighborhoods and healthy environments. And we must continue to put in place the necessary regulations to protect our neighborhoods from Bitcoin in future I-2 zones. So thus, I was intrigued to see that the future land use map only indicates four industrial zones within city limits, like the Buffalo Mountain Industrial Park and the others would be converted to employment flex. So that lines up with what the community wants. So my first question is, how will you de-industrialize South Johnson City and the South Rhone Corridor? Second, there was a lot of community input in the process and many comments were also provided after the draft final report was released. And those were incorporated in your packet tonight for the first reading as appendices. So they do tackle critical areas that still need more investment, like affordable housing, parks, public art, pedestrian and cycling safety, and many others. They also highlight several factual and editorial errors in that report. So my second question is, how will you incorporate that specific community feedback and comments and revise the final report for adoption? And finally, this plan won't mean anything unless it's implemented with follow-through. We've all seen plans that are left on the shelf and partially implemented and limited accountability and transparency provided for the implementation. And clearly, that's not what the people want, and it's not what this movement really calls for. So my third question is, will you establish a transparent public process to track the plan's implementation, especially the priorities that residents support the most, and will you commit to collaborating with the public on areas that remain contentious? In closing, I'll say that the Horizon 2045 Plan is a good start, but it must be more than words, and it must reflect what residents value and commit the Commission to act accordingly. And I hope you will ensure that that happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Sylvan. Ms. Ball? Do you want me to, or, okay. The next public comments relate to item 8.4, ordinance 4925-25, and ordinance to amend Title VIII, Chapters 1 and 2 of the Code of the City of Johnson City, which is also on second reading where there will be public hearing. First on our list is Chris Edwards.
Little redundant, but Chris Edwards, good to see you. How are y'all? You know, for the last couple of weeks, I've been attending meetings facilitated both by the government and by citizens. And I've learned one thing along the way in trying to be a better and educated voter within this city. I've learned tonight behind me, fact-based and emotionally, I'm going to use the word obnoxious, but it's not fair, but emotionally obnoxious people will see and hear two different things tonight. So I'm going to try something different. I'm going to try to tell a story and maybe they both can hear what I have to say. I travel a lot for work. Recently, I've been sitting back watching the interactions between passengers and flight crews. I saw a gentleman the other day berate a gate agent because the gate agent kept explaining to them that his luggage would not fit on a regional carrier. He could care less, walked away in anger, tried to get his luggage to fit, five minutes later had to come back and say, "I need you to check my luggage." Then I get on the plane and I sit and I watch countless people haphazardly just putting their luggage up, even though the flight attendants have said 20 times, "Put it like a book on a bookshelf." They choose not to pay attention, causing the flight attendants to have to come behind them, reorganize the bins so that everybody's luggage can get in place and we get off on time. And unfortunately, in today's world, I had to sit through an argument that escalated to a point where the pilot had to be called off of his security checklist to sit a passenger down and explain to her the airline's policies and procedures about seat assignment and also his authority to kick her off if she could not abide. I share that because I see a lot of commonality between my travel and these meetings. There's a small percentage of disruptors within this community. No matter what you do, you will be wrong, you will be hated, you will be threatened. What I ask you to do tonight is to be the flight crew for Johnson City. Because in my opinion, you are the only people in this room, educated, practiced, and God willing, I don't know how, patient enough to land this plane for all 75,000 passengers. So tonight I ask you to vote yes to change the hours for alcohol within Johnson City. And with my last 28 seconds, I want to ask a rhetorical question. What do you think the Vegas odds are, over/under on the percentage of the amount of people behind me that will be here when this meeting ends? I bet it's marginally low because I'm one of the few people that shows up from start to finish, because I care about my entire city, not just one. I don't care just about one thing. We're bigger than just that, and we need to start working together like it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Next on our list is Dave Adams.
Apologies for the shift in tone. Mayor Hunter and Commission, I'm Dave Adams and I'm tired. Last Thursday, I moderated a town hall that you chose to skip. During that town hall, I got word that my grandmother was dying. After the town hall, I drove nine hours overnight to care for her. She passed peacefully yesterday. I mourned with my family all day, drove home overnight, worked a full day, and then came here to speak to you because I care. My son started kindergarten today. I'd much rather be at home sharing ice cream with him to celebrate, but instead I'm here asking grown adults to do their jobs. I didn't show up to be a contrarian. I'm not here to pee in your Cheerios. I'm here to beg you to stop failing our community. You may find it annoying to hear people come here to grovel at your feet for their livelihoods. You may think it's fine to disrespect the nearly 100 voices who showed up in good faith last week to speak with you. But I don't. You've given bars and their workers just three weeks to fundamentally change their business model without offering a single coherent justification that holds up under scrutiny. I've been to meetings and I've asked. Well, actually, they got four weeks' notice because I leaked this. You know this measure doesn't have public support, and you lie about that. You asked this question directly in the 2024 Community Survey, and you didn't get the answer you wanted. It didn't have public support. Is that why you chose to not publish the results? I leaked those too. Just a few months ago, when you passed this resolution to petition the state, you swore it wasn't going to go down like this. Just a tool in the toolbox, nothing drastic. 1:00 AM was a made-up number, fake news. And then, of course, it did go down like this. You seem to be fundamentally incapable of engaging in good faith. Your meetings are recorded, your emails are public record. This plan has been quietly in motion for three years, you just didn't want us to know. If you want to be good stewards, stop treating the public like a dumb angry crowd. We're supposed to be on the same team. Your office exists to deliberate and engage the public in good faith. It doesn't have to come to this. You're rushing a decision with no rollout plan, no answers to basic questions like tax revenue or ETSU security needs that come as a result of this, and no alternative solutions considered. Again, I've been to the meetings. You ignore anyone who disagrees and then find yourself astonished at the levels of agreement. Perhaps you've had one too many easy races to feel any need to connect to everyday residents. How do you go home after this and tell yourself you did the right thing? How do you justify intentionally misleading people about these points, disrespecting them, and tearing apart jobs with no notice period? I guess if I had you and your friends' commercial real estate portfolios, I'd understand. Oh, I do. Interesting.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Next is Michael Tribbet.
Do you want my name? My name is Michael Tribbet. I live here in Johnson City. I've been a resident since second grade. I'd have to do the math on that.
That's all right.
I would like to let you know, first off, to give you all a reminder of our history. It was in the presidential election when Ronald Reagan was elected that Liquor by the Drink passed. And at that time, Johnson City was one of the smallest of the three tri-cities. It fairly quickly became the largest of the three tri-cities by virtue of the fact that we were able to get chain restaurants that came into the tri-cities. So the alcohol by the drink has fueled our economy in more ways than perhaps we are aware. But you might want to consider some of the outlined things beyond just the bars and nightclubs. Also, something else is by virtue of the fact that at that time, people were coming from Bristol and Kingsport, or in fact, according to the Johnson City press, that 80% of the people that were coming to Johnson City had traveled more than 40 miles beyond Greenville to come to Johnson City for entertainment. So at this point, what we're talking about is doing the reverse of that. We're going to try to send our business to Kingsport and Bristol. There's a casino just 20 miles down the road in Bristol that is open until 6:00 AM or 24 hours. I think you can get Liquor by the Drink there 24 hours. So why do we want to send our business to Bristol? The next thing I would also like to say is, I hope, and I had heard Ms. Ball, in fact, that you were the one that had also included New Beginnings, which is not downtown, but I wanted to include that to be fair. So I want to tell a story. And to be clear, this is a fictitious story. So I hope if you can remember, when you were growing up, if you had siblings. So Ms. Ball, let's say it's Thursday night, and you're in your bedroom and you're working on your project for your next stage science project, and your brother comes home with the police. He's been caught driving with alcohol in an open container, and your parents are furious. They say, "You lose your car privileges, you can only drive to and from school. You lose your phone because you have disobeyed the rules of our house, and you have no extracurricular activities." But to be fair, to be fair, you're one of our siblings also, so you get the same punishment. And I think that that is a lot of what we're doing to the businesses here. There are probably 20 or 30 different licensees who are abiding by the rules of the licenses, who are doing their very best and abiding by the law and don't have safety concerns. Myself, I'll say it's been 20 or 25 years since we've had to call the police for anything more than some homeless person that is camped out by our backed emergency exits. We don't have those issues, but yet we're being punished the same. I do believe, in fact, our minister had said in the opening, that to help us to make the best decisions we have with the resources at hand. But you all are not using the resources that you have at hand. I cannot help but think that you all would know where the problem issues are, that if there are repeat offenders in these licensees, you can, there are fines, penalties, you can pull their beer license, you can pull their liquor license. You have many, many things in your toolbox that you could choose to use, and why you have chosen to go this route, I don't understand. Because you had all these tools that you could get this situation under control if safety, public safety, is your issue. Because we all want the community where we live.
Oh, Mr. Tribbet, your time, sorry.
We all want the community where we live to be treated well.
Thank you.
Mr. Tribbet, thank you for your comments. I am going to make one remark. Mrs. Ball was only carrying out what this Commission asked her to do, and we had legislation from the Tennessee General Assembly, and we wanted to ensure that we were interpreting that correctly. It was reviewed by legal, and so the changes that were made was to carry out the letter of the law that was given to us. This was not her.
To be clear.
To be clear, I was making a fictitious story.
No, no, no. You called out Ms. Ball.
I had heard that it was her.
It is not. I promise you. I was a part of it, and everybody sitting on this dais was a part and asked her to do that.
Next.
That's fine.
Next on our agenda. Next person to speak, Abigail Honeycutt.
I'm trying to be respectful. It's not been at all effective. Hi, how is everyone today? It's so nice to see you again, Mr. Hunter, in the only forum in which I get to speak to you and you don't respond, but I did think it was quite interesting that you were certain to respond to Dave Adams, as if we don't know enough about this city has no respect for its women. You just keep proving it. So I'm here today, first of all, to make very, very clear that this is not twisted in any way, shape, or form in the news. Our business owners took it upon themselves to reach out to the county to get our sheriffs to solve the safety issues on y'all's turf. That was the business holders. That was not by design, that was not the plan, that was them. And you know, I really, really had such a great deal of respect for Mr. Keith Sexton because he's not afraid of 100-pound soaking-wet little girls having a conversation and looking them in the eye. And I just thought that was really impressive. So in my last two minutes and 20 seconds, I kind of agree with Dave, that you know, were this to be a real safety issue, we just resolved it, and it didn't cost y'all nothing. So you're going to be really, really on board with giving it a six-out tryout period, right? Because if it's not a real safety issue, it's more about real estate and real estate portfolios. So Mr. Cox, it's you that owns a good chunk of downtown, no? Mr. Hunter, you've got some sort of interest in the Beehive Building, no? Mr. Wise, it's you that is, oh, he's not here, but the HOA Management Building? The JCDA was recently dissolved, they own the parking garage, that responsibility's been absorbed by the city. We've got 100 bougie condos coming downtown, no parking? I mean, that logic at least tracks, right? But what do I know? I'm just a tiny waitress running on exhausted fumes for your request and talking to people much, much, much smarter than me. And in my last one minute, I'd like to do a quick recap of all of the times we have been lied to by Ms. Kathy Ball since she took over the management of our city. You tried to buy the condo, that's your business, and you lied about it, and it's in paper, ma'am. You stood up here and you said, "It is a mystery why everybody thinks it's 1:00 AM. I don't know why everybody downtown is so concerned about that hour being 1:00 AM. It's just a tool in the toolbox." And I have an email from September of 2024 specifically citing 1:00 AM as being the cause. And if that were to have been the case, and if that were to have been the plan, you could have had even me all over your team for safety shuttles and maybe a reduction or lifted off the table, and I don't matter and I'm not important, but y'all make that clear enough, so I don't need to reiterate how unimportant I am or how unimportant the workers are that can't afford to be there. There ain't no point in talking about it. Y'all don't give a shit about the people or the owners that built it. 1:00 AM, but it was never 1:00 AM, but it was always 1:00 AM. And it was always our lobbying tax dollars to take it to the state to override the municipal code for voter referendum. It's all been about, well, y'all making the decisions as you see fit, not listening to your constituents. Thank you for your time.
Next on the list is Adam Stallings. No, that's not how this meeting operates.
Good evening. My name is Adam Stallings. I'm the owner of Subroller Corporation and Laboratory Smoke Shop co-owner. Mayor Hunter, Commissioners and citizens of Johnson City. I come before you not just as a business owner, but as a citizen who is fed up, fed up with the blatant negligence, the bureaucratic cowardice, and the ethically bankrupt leadership of city manager Kathy Ball. Let's not sugarcoat this. Kathy Ball was imported from Nashville, North Carolina, presided over an economic decline in her former city by restricting alcohol sales, a decision-
Adam, sorry. Are you going to talk about the actual agenda item?
I'm getting to that.
Okay, let's do that.
Absolutely. I plan on getting that. A decision that directly contributed to a surge in crime, and now she wants to do the same here in Johnson City to us. This isn't policy, it's malpractice. These proposed restrictions on downtown businesses will destroy jobs, close thriving establishments, and gut the very tax revenue that keeps this city afloat. Her solution is to strangle the lifeblood of our economy while crime festers unchecked in our streets. We begged for increased police presence, we pleaded for help, and each time Kathy Ball offered us the same tired excuse, "It's not in the budget." But we went straight to the source, Sheriff Keith Sexton, and he told us on the record that not one single city official has ever asked for assistance to increase law enforcement presence downtown, not one. So I ask you, is Kathy Ball lying to us or to you? Either answer is disqualifying. Sheriff Sexton has pledged to work with us, he's promised to solve the crime problem, not ignore it, not hide behind a spreadsheet but act. Meanwhile, Kathy Ball's solution is punish the business owners, punish the- Meanwhile, Kathy Ball's solution is punish the business owners, punish the workers, punish the people trying to build something real in this city. And why? Why the obsession with crippling downtown? Let me ask you directly, Mayor Hunter. How many properties do you own downtown? You're not answering? All right, you, Mr. Cox, how many properties are you, are, do you own downtown, or is in one of your associates' names? You're not answering either. How I propose. Because the only thing that makes sense here is corruption. The only thing that explains this sabotage of the local economy is a land grab, a deliberate effort to tank the downtown market so private interests can scoop up real estate at fire sale prices and only sell it off later at astronomical profit. Meanwhile, the city is sitting on a $28 million steaming lawsuit from your failure. This administration's failure to protect its citizens from a known serial rapist, Shawn Williams, and let's be very clear, Kathy Ball, you had direct involvement in attempting to acquire his penthouse property. So I want that to sink into every single constituent here. This is not just incompetence, it's dereliction of duty, it's a betrayal of public trust. And I promise you now, if you move forward with these proposals, I will bring hell with me. I assure you.
Thank you, Ms. Brock.
A lawsuit.
Next on the list, Ashton Smith. Ashton Smith.
My name is Ashton Smith. I'm the other owner of the Laboratory Smoke Shop. Look, I get it, 3:00 AM is late. I'm sure most of you are asleep dreaming about a city where no one's ever drunk, everyone's in bed by midnight, and the squirrels clean up downtown every morning like Cinderella's birds. You know, but that's not the case, and here's the reality. Pushing the alcohol time back to 1:00 AM doesn't magically send people home, it sends them somewhere else. The parking lots downtown where these problems actually happen, Bristol, to their bars, to the casino, like has been mentioned, or down the street to a house party. Everybody wants that, right? Spread it all out, where it can't be controlled. Anywhere but the bars downtown where we have staff, security, and a system in place. Now, let's talk economy. These bars pay taxes, they employ bartenders, security, DJs, cooks, janitors, and people who pour their hearts out into serving hot dogs at 2:00 AM. The nightlife industry here isn't just people getting drunk, it's jobs, it's art, it's community. And sometimes, yeah, that comes with a, with a shot of tequila. But, you know, I know some people say it's getting out of hand downtown. I've heard the stories, I've seen the video too. But here's the kicker. The Washington County Sheriff said he can fix it. He said he can fix it, and you all cannot ignore that. I know you tried to by not asking him, but you cannot ignore that. He said that the problem could be fixed. Why are we nuking the entire local economy over a few bad nights? That's like burning down your house because the smoke detector needs a new battery. Let's not pretend this is about safety if you're ignoring the advice of your own law enforcement. Let's not pretend this is about responsibility when you're pulling the rug from local business owners without real dialogue, because if you truly wanted solutions, we're right here. Business owners, residents, people who love this city, and the Washington County Sheriff. This feels like leadership, this feels less like leadership and more like a teacher punishing the whole class because one kid ate a little bit of glue. So I'm asking you, no, I'm challenging you, let's work with the people who make this city move, with the bar owners, the DJs, the bouncers, the regulars, and the Washington County Sheriff. Let's build something, not break it, because this decision, it doesn't make us safer, it just makes us quieter. Maybe that's what you guys want, but I didn't move to Johnson City because I wanted it to be boring. I moved here because it had life. Let's not kill it.
Thank you.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Last on the list for public comment is Brad Bat.
Howdy, folks. I'll try to strike a more pragmatic tone. I'm sorry Joe Wise isn't here because he tries to embrace that. You know, I don't know what y'all's agendas are and all that, I don't know who owns what, but I do know this hurts people, and that's why I don't like it. And I want to change your mind and have you vote no. And if I didn't think your minds could be changed, I wouldn't be here. I'd write you off like Harshbarger or representatives higher than her, right? So I, I just want to look at the fact, it hurts people, and, and that's the one reason I don't like it. And I don't like it because of how we've gone about it. Now, I've run for State House twice, so I know how the legislature works a little bit. Our state legislators have 10 bills that they're limited to by the speaker. So we went out of our way to carve out this state law just to apply to Johnson City. It only applies to cities between 133,000, 133, and 100, right? Only us. Now, if this was such a great idea, let's implement it statewide, right? But that's not what we did, okay? This is just the facts. And it's, and then that, that bill was introduced February 6th of this year. A week later, this city commission endorsed it. So like, you're doing the work that the commission asked you to do, right? To go get this bill passed. And we've heard the 1:00 AM denials, that it, it wasn't any time. And in fact, in that February 3rd meeting, Joe Wise said, we're just adding a tool to the toolbox. And Mayor Hunter, you said several emails we've received had a 1 o'clock cutoff. I've not seen that. Is that an assumption? Just for clarification, is that anywhere in this resolution a set time? And Kathy, of course, you say, I don't think it is. It is not. Because of course not. But that doesn't mean that's not the intent. And because we have some people who are using their freedoms and the Freedom of Information Act, while we still have those freedoms, they got an email from September 8th of 2004, where city manager Ball, you mentioned, we are still talking to legislators about trying to stop the sale of alcohol at 1:00. I mean, that just speaks for itself, right? So it feels dishonest. It's definitely not transparent. I, I know that it feels like not nice to say. I don't hate you. I'm not trying to oppose everything. You don't see me here complaining about everything. Maybe the third time I've spoken. This is wrong, it hurts people. At a time when rent is so high, everything costs more, right before school starts, we're going to kick working people out of their income? So city manager, you've known about 1:00 AM for at least a year, probably longer. It is unfair to the workers here to catch them by surprise. They don't have the accounts that y'all have. Most people don't have any kind of savings. 47% of people in this county pre-pandemic live on the edge of affording their monthly expenses. That's United Way numbers. Don't hurt the workers. Please vote no on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. That concludes, that concludes the public comments. Next on the item.
Yes, the next order of business is considered.
Public hearing, sorry. Is there anybody that wants to pull anything off the concern agenda?
I think I want to pull.
I will, I will wait, now it's clarified.
Thank you.
I just, I, thank you. The rules have changed.
Pull 6.1.7 related to Knob Creek Road.
Dr. Fowler, do you have anything?
I do not.
Commissioner Brock.
6.1.8.
All right.
Yes, item 6.1.7 is to consider approval of a contract amendment with A. Morton Thomas for Knob Creek Road CSX Railroad Overpass Project in the amount of $200,000. If our Public Works Director, Jason Miles, could come to the podium.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Kath, Manager Ball. So this is the Knob Creek Road Amendment, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so this is a design amendment for A. Morton Thomas to assist us with answering questions and comments that have been provided by T-DOT and the Railroads Consultant regarding the design of the Knob Creek Overpass Project. So some of these issues include the span of the, the bridge over top of the railway. You know, there's a process that we need to go through, they call it the Project Delivery Network, that, you know, requires us to follow certain procedures for resolving these issues. So obviously, we need the help of our engineered record for this project to address those, those concerns. Are there any specific questions that you may have about the project?
Really just, is there kind of a timeline and of when it can start and more to, to that? And just kind of that whole area, there's a lot of road construction right now, so it's kind of good to kind of know the details of that.
Yes, sir. So the project is in the T-DOT's 10-year plan. The anticipated bid letting for the project is spring of 2027. That's been moved back a little bit due to what we understand is, you know, the timeframe it's going to take for environmental permitting, which should wrap up in the spring of 2027. So we'll be right behind that with bidding the project. And then the, the process that T-DOT requires for, you know, awarding the contract, and then start of construction puts us at early fall 2027 for start of construction. And we anticipate, staff anticipates, a project duration, construction duration of about two to three years. We, we've seen over the past several years, issues with supply chain, logistics, and things like that. So we're being conservative with that two to three year estimate, I think.
Thanks, Jason.
You bet. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
The next item that Commissioner Brock has asked about is item 6.1.8, to consider resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Johnson City approving the amended economic impact plan for the Brush Creek, known as Burlington Mills Development Project.
Mrs. Summers will be covering that. One of the things that was in the public domain this week was the fact that the county approved a TIF for this project. And I thought it would really be good for the public to understand exactly what a TIF is and how it's essential for some of these kind of larger projects like this. So if you could address that, that would be great.
Absolutely. So I think we've all, we've all experienced the downtown district TIF that we've, we've had for the past couple of decades. So this is our newest request for a TIF. And what a TIF is, is it's a public financial tool that we use to promote economic development and redevelopment projects in specific areas. It's authorized by state statute, and the increment for tax increment financing is the improved value of the property. So the base tax for the property continues to go to the city and the county. The government agency in this case would be the Industrial Development Board of Johnson City. They're the borrower, and the tip, the developer is responsible for arranging the financing. They are non-recourse to the IDB or the county or the city in the event of default. So there are certain types of projects that the Industrial Development Board is eligible to use this financial tool with. You can see that list up there. In this particular case, with Burlington Mills and the Brush Creek Redevelopment Project, the entry point is the retail component of this project. And TIF funds can be used for public infrastructure. You can see on the screen that these are all of the areas that the public infrastructure dollars will be used for, for this project. So a little bit about the Brush Creek Project. It's a six-phase, eight-year project. It's mixed use. It's on the former Burlington Mills textile plant site. There, there will be private investment of about $240 million. It will create over 1,049 residential units and have about 100,000 square feet of retail space. The estimated value of the TIF over the term of the tax increment financing agreement is not to exceed $21.7 million. These are the components of the TIF. So we've already negotiated between the IDB, the city, and the developer, the term sheet. We're at the stage with the economic impact plan, and you all may remember that we brought this plan back on May the 15th for your approval. It was approved by this commission. It has also been approved by the Industrial Development Board. Earlier this month, well, actually, now it's last month, it went in front of the county's CIA Committee, their Commercial, Industrial, and Agricultural Committee, for their approval and recommendation. And it moved on to the county commission, where they approved it with a, with one change, and that was a 15% holdback. And so that's why we're back here today, is for approval for that amendment. So a little more about the site itself. It's about 22 acres. It had a half a million square foot warehouse, 110 apartment units, and some commercial space. It was also, the building itself covered Brush Creek. And the future project will uncover Brush Creek, open that up to a public area, and create, as I mentioned, 1,049 residential units, 100,000 square feet of commercial space. It'll have a town square, the restoration of Brush Creek, and stormwater retention, and then also the creation of a public park. You can see on this slide, the TIF plan area outlined in black. The phases of the project. Again, there's six phases over eight years. The timeline. And this screen captures the West Walnut Road improvements. They'll be done in Phase 1B of the project. So in about two years, we'll start on that, the developer will start on that phase. So again, the total upon completion, 1,049 residential units, 100,000 square feet of retail space. So I want to talk just a little bit about the public benefits of the project. I've mentioned the $240 million in capital investment over that eight-year period. There'll be about one at full buildout, about $1.3 million annually in direct sales tax, $1.6 million annually in indirect sales tax and property tax revenues, the creation of over 1,049 units. And you all have been, have been hearing us talk about the housing needs assessment and how we have that housing gap, and this helps address that. Additionally, there'll be the increase in stormwater capacity, the road and the bridge improvements on West Walnut, again, the high, the increase in the high-density residential units, an expansion of the Tweatsie Trail, retail opportunities, the restoration of Brush Creek, and the sales tax revenue and property tax revenue increases. So you all are familiar from last time with the economic impact plan. Again, the IDB approved it originally, May the 14th. City Commission approved it, May the 15th. It went to the county commission on July 28th. And with that change, it needs to come back for approval of the amendment to the, to the city commission, and then it goes back to the IDB for their final approval. So the request tonight is approval of the amendment, and staff recommends approval.
Punch our speakers here. Thanks very much, Ms. Summers. Just the, the other portion of this, the reason it went to the county is because even though it's in, in the city, the city is in the county. So they're part of any, any kind of economic development that we do. And we all, you know, from a, from a tax appraisal process, the county benefits from that as, as does the city. So thank you for that explanation.
Any other questions, comments? Move for approval. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Laus.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes. Ms. Ball.
Yes, the north, next order of business is.
Yes, the north, next order of business is ordinances under first reading. This is, the first one is item 7.1. This is ordinance 4920-25. This is the first reading of an ordinance to adopt and certify Johnson City's comprehensive plan known as Horizon 2045 Growth Management Plan.
Mayor, Commissioners, I'm Whitney Hodges, the Planning Manager for Johnson City, and I am excited tonight that I finally get to bring this presentation to you. This process has been about two years in the making, and it's one that we had to do per the state statute, but I also like to think it's one that we got to do. Because it was a real treat to be out in the community, listening to big ideas, and collecting things to put into this one big plan. Just to kind of go over where we are in the process, when we needed to do this plan because our original comprehensive plan expired, and we had the bridge plan that you all approved in 2021, and that is now expiring as well. So the Planning Commission has certified and adopted the plan. They did that last month. We are at first reading, and we'll read it three times, just like any other ordinance. We have our consultant here, Jessica Rossi with Kim Lee Horn, and she's going to be going over kind of the overall spirit of the plan. And then we will have public hearing next reading, which is August 21st, with final action, September 20, September 4th. So I'm going to turn it over to Jessica.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Commission members. Really quickly, what we're going to cover tonight is, we're going to quickly talk about the public engagement that has gone into the, supporting this plan. I want to share with you how we got to the future land use map, which is a really critical part of the plan. I want to talk about the framework plans and the implementation strategies that are associated with the plan. And then we pulled the next steps forward, so we will skip that part of the agenda. So, in, kind of taking you back, as Whitney mentioned, this plan has been about two years in the making. We started the plan in August of 2023 with our first phase of work, which was really giving us an opportunity to really get to know the community. So our key tasks in that phase were the project initiation, understanding the baseline commission, the baseline conditions of Johnson City, co-creating a vision statement with our advisory commission, and establishing planning themes that we will use throughout the document. The second phase of work, really, we really rolled up our sleeves and worked through the future land use strategy and created the policy framework that sets up our implementation strategies. And then our final phase, which began in December of 2024 and concluded just recently, is taking the report, kind of packaging up the report and getting it ready to bring it through the adoption phase. So a really important part of the comprehensive plan was the engagement piece. We wanted this plan to be grounded in community support and driven by what the community prioritizes and what is important here. As part of the process, we utilized several means and methods to get that feedback. One is an advisory committee that met four times during the process, and will meet one time tomorrow for a quick update and a thank you for their time that they've spent over the last two years. We engaged with stakeholders that were subject matter experts that really helped us understand what some of the needs and the priorities were. We engaged, of course, with you, the city commission, and the Planning Commission was integral in helping us frame up the, the themes that came out, revise and review the future land use map, and make sure that we're setting implementation strategies that are achievable and practical. We, of course, met with the public. We had three public workshops throughout the course of the plan, and we worked very closely with staff, particularly during the implementation strategy phase, and I'll talk about that in a little while. So really quickly, the meetings and workshops, so the public part of the phase, were where we engaged with the community. We had about 1,900 touch, touchpoints during this process, which resulted in more than 20,000 individual data points. So when we asked a question and we got a response, we counted that as one individual data point. So there's a lot of, a lot of feedback that went into this plan. We also utilized a project website to collect information. That website received more than 7,000 views from more than 3,000 unique users over the course. So not only did we have in-person events, but we also engaged the community online to create as much diversity in how we got, reached out to the public and how we received information back. I will say that as part of the adoption process, there was a 30-day review period. Those counts are included in our number. And the way that we approached the 30-day review period is that each week, we collected the responses that we received on the draft comprehensive plan. We inventoried them, we shared them with staff, we shared them with the Planning Commission and with the City Commission. And on actionable items, we went ahead and quickly incorporated those into the document. So all of the feedback that we've received during that 30-day review period, for actionable items that pointed out either typos or slight tweaks to how we presented the data, or called out errors in the plan itself, we have already incorporated those, and that is the, the plan that is online and available for review for this meeting. As part of our process, I mentioned we did meet with stakeholder groups or subject matter experts. We did this throughout the course of the plan, so we had a fairly large push in the fall of 2023, where we met with many of these groups to really kind of roll up our sleeves and learn as much as we could, as fast as we could. But as the plan progressed, there were instances when, where we were like, where we realized that we needed a little bit more information. And so we would work with staff closely to connect with the, with the individuals, the agencies, the organizations that we needed to connect with, to make sure that we were fully considering all, the voices that we needed to hear from. And so this, while most of these happened in the fall of '23, several of them occurred throughout 2024 as well. But it was really important for us to not only ask the community to come to us, but to go to the community. And I think this was really a testament of staff commitment to, and we, as, as the consultant, went to several of these, but I think Whitney went to many, many evening events. And we were able to really dive in and engage with the community and be able to go to them and listen in, in a format where we collected information and we heard a lot of really great and informative feedback. And so I think that if I had to look back on the engagement component of this plan, the pop-up events were some of the more exciting, and I think really just a great testament to the dedication to hear from the community. So as we think to how we got to the future land use map portion of the plan, it started with the Community Characteristics Report. That is essentially the baseline conditions for what we learned about Johnson City and what we needed to know in order to think about future growth and development in this community. So that was put forward and was reviewed and has been available on the website. In concert with the Advisory Committee, the Planning Commission, and the City Commission, as well as the public during some of our workshops, we created and refined a guiding statement and planning themes that were really the beacon or the guiding light for this plan throughout. We created a conceptual growth strategy. So if you think of our future land use map, the growth strategy is that 50,000 square foot level that is really giving us the direction of how the community wants to grow, where it wants to grow, and what does that growth look like? And then that conceptual growth strategy was then refined and you, and used, kind of created building blocks for what that growth really looks like in the future. So this is a quick example of the conceptual growth strategy map. This has been done for about a year now, so it's something that most people have seen. We've shared this at the public workshops and we're able, and this has been on the website. So again, this is that kind of bigger picture view for how, how the community has told us and how we've listened to how growth and development might take shape in the community. I mentioned those building blocks that make up the future land use plan, and we are calling these place types. And place types are a way to describe land use in a way that is not just residential, commercial, office, industrial. It really envisions the character of an area and allows for really unique and localized growth patterns to emerge. And so you can see here that we used several place types throughout the plan, some with the downtown focus, some with the mixed-use, residential focus, and non-residential focuses. And what these place types do is they identify appropriate land uses, whether that's residential, commercial, institutional, or industrial, and also the desired characteristics of these placed, of these places. So what does the use mix look like? What are the use types? How dense is a residential, what types of residential? What are the setbacks and the transportation that would be needed to serve these areas? When we created the flume, this was really a very iterative process with a lot of review loops. So we started with a conceptual growth strategy. We drafted a flume. We did several loops and sharing with staff. The Advisory Committee provided feedback. The Planning Commission and City Commission both provided feedback, and then we took it out to the public. So there has been a lot of opportunities, both in-person and virtually, to share and provide feedback on the future land use plan. And so when you think about all of the pieces and parts that go into identifying what place types go into what areas, we looked at your current zoning. We looked at the, the current future land use map, the one that kind of was before this one. We looked at existing land use. We looked at how things have changed and evolved in recent years, and we listened to the community feedback. And so over a course of probably close to six months, we really, we started with, with the future land use map, and we kind of kept refining it in iterative loops. And this is the future land use map. Again, it provides a framework for understanding Johnson City's vision for the mix and distribution of land uses across the community. One thing to note is that property, properties that are located on boundary edges are going to need to be carefully reviewed as they change and evolve to make sure that they're kind of fitting into the right area, as areas can change quickly. This is a more, a more planner, that's probably not the, this has softer edges. Planning staff has a more detailed future land use map that is parcel-based, and that is also going to be available online, so you can kind of see both versions. But this is an easier-on-the-eyes version for, for tonight's presentation. There is a summary of the place types, so as you can see, neighborhood residential and rural residential comprise the greatest percentage of future land use types, classifications. But there's a wide array of different place types that are also being incorporated into the community. What I, what I liked about the public comment section today was the first speaker's kind of call to action in terms of making sure that this plan is a living, breathing document, and that what is, what is included as recommendations and implementation strategies are, are acted on. And that's, that's really exciting to me, and I think that that is very much the intent of how we approached the implementation strategies. We worked very, very closely with staff from all departments in their review of the strategies that we put forward to make sure that they felt like they were achievable, that they felt like the timeline for the, the, when we called out the prioritization and the timing for the different implementation strategies, that they fit within how they could see their department being able to tackle based on staff time, staff availability, and things like that. So this, it really was a, a great feedback, and I, I do want to say thank you so much to all of the departments that provided feedback in the implementation strategies. It made it that much stronger and that much more realistic that, for a community to be able to move those forward. So we did have eight themes throughout the course of the document. And each theme ha, is kind of built upon objectives and policies and actions that help to kind of establish how to move the plan forward. Each, within those implementation strategies, there is a wide array of different things, from future planning projects that could be done, to programs that the city could, could consider, policies and projects, both infrastructure and non-infrastructure. So in the implementation strategy, within, for each type of action, it provides that type, so program, policy, plan, or project. It provides a timeframe for when that can be prioritized, and whether that's going to be something that is standalone, a one-time thing, or ongoing. It provides a sense of scale for the amount of resources, whether that be staff hours or dollars, that is needed to bring those implementation items to fruition. And then it identifies who the responsible entities are to help carry those implementation strategies forward. And I think what's really important here is through the community engagement process, we really listened to what the community priorities were. And for everything that came up very loud and clear as a priority to the community, you'll see one of these targets next to that item to call out things that bubbled up through the, as we listened to the community. So this is just a sample of one of several pages of implementation strategies. This is under the Quality, Growth, and Development. So you'll see there's an objective. Objective number one is to attract growth that is manageable and desirable. And then under that objective, there's several policies and a series of action items to help support the plan's themes and goals. And so you'll see that several of them have those arrows or those targets as community priority actions, as well as timeframes, responsible entities, and resources. And so with that, I'll pause and want to be available if there's any questions.
I'm not sure if I heard it, but Mr. Bruny had asked, and you're, we got the 30-day period of comments. Have those been incorporated?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. We have very carefully inventoried all of the comments that we received during that 30-day period. We kind of took them week over week, so we would receive, work very closely with staff to incorporate them as we received them. Many of them were either, you know, we like this plan, or had comments about growth in general that we inventoried and tracked, but didn't necessarily result in kind of a direct change to the plan. But anything that pointed out inaccuracies or typos or substantive changes were incorporated with consultation by staff, week over week.
Great, thank you. And this is probably more directed at you. Mr. Bruny also asked about implementation, which I think one of those charts kind of led to that.
And because, because this is a 200-page document, we are breaking it up just a little bit. So I wanted to make sure that, when Jessica was here, that you got the overview of how we got to the plan, and then what we're taking next, I'll present at the next meeting. But one of the things that we, that is in those comments, a lot of times, or some of the things I would say, is we've, I've always said that this is the plan to plan. So sometimes it's that next step of wanting that next plan. And so, yes, we want to do those plans, we just can't do it all in this one particular document.
Yeah.
Well, and I'll chime in on that. Mr. Bruny had a good comment just on, you know, plan's only as good as it gets implemented, and I know we're going to do a great job at that. But next, he also had a comment about just being transparent, how to watch it, and how it's successful as time goes on. And so just as be thinking as that kind of gets on the website, and I've already heard this plan mentioned many times so far, just as I've been on the commission in a few months on rezoning and how it applies, but just maybe a way to kind of watch that online and how things interact.
So I'm working with communications as we transition from what has been a Kim Lee Horn website to a Johnson City website. And we're, I'm really excited about what will be on the plan, or will be on the, one of the-
And we're, I'm really excited about what will be on the plan, or will be on the, one of the webpage, because when Jessica mentioned the, that you can look at parcel by parcel. You can do that right now through the Get Involved tab. If you want to see, if you want to look in your address and see what your property will be in the future land use map, you can do that right now. We'll, we'll make that into a city staff map. We'll have frequently asked questions, so you can know how to use this plan. We're going to take those documents that they used and also put it on our website, so that the, all of that information is available to the public.
Actually, because I get the opportunity to work in communities across the country, a couple of things that we have seen some success in, I've worked with a community that when they do their agenda for, you know, for a commission meeting or for a planning commission, if there's an item on the agenda that is associated with their growth plan, they actually use the growth plan logo and put it right there on the agenda that gives a very clear, like, one-to-one. It doesn't necessarily work for everybody, but it is a way to kind of communicate when an agenda item is coming forward, and it is, you know, checking off, checking off one of your implementation strategies, or it's a quick win or a long win. It just, it gives a little bit more forward-thinking. There's also ways that you can leverage websites to be able to kind of track the, track the status of what you've accomplished and what's coming next, and that's also been very successful. And so we can provide staff with some examples of those. It may work for you, it may not, but there are ways to kind of bring the community along with you as you work through the implementation items.
And I also think that you, planning commission or staff have been using the Horizon Plan, even though it's not implemented, but just in practice, to say, here's how it relates as things come about. And so I think that's, that's good as well. Any comments?
I'd just like to take a minute for some thanks. This is started, I guess, in 20, when?
Twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-three. But it really started before that, because we, as a commission, it was a different commission at the time, we were beginning to see a lot of growth in the city. And when Mrs. Ball came on, one of the first things we asked her to do was to guide and direct a growth management plan. You know, how do we, how do we deal with the infrastructure needed for growth? Because the, you know, worst thing is to let growth happen, and then you can't support it with the roads and the, and water sewer and all that kind of stuff. And so this is what this turned out to be. I definitely want to thank staff, and want to thank the community for being so involved in getting the opportunity to give input on multiple occasions. I also want to thank the planning commission. And for those in the audience, the planning commission is a nine-member body that we appoint, and their citizens who give of their time to deal with all of the different planning issues, from zoning to annexations, and they review all that first before it ever comes to us. But they spent countless hours in helping with this. So for those of you who want to serve on committees where you really roll your sleeves up and get engaged, it's not just the rubber stamp stuff, they were very involved in helping the movement of this plan through, so that we're reviewing it tonight to be able to get to the point, as Vice Mayor says, to, for implementation. So thanks to all of y'all, and Whitney, for your guidance at the, at the state level, I mean, state, at the city level. You never gave up, you know? And there's, there's like a million pieces of data in the work that's been done right here, and we really thank you. This is a roadmap for us. Folks, we are going to grow. We have people all the time saying, well, we need to stop, don't let other people come here. But Johnson City's always been known for growth, ever since its beginning, and entrepreneurship and, and it's kind of a business center here. But I think with the land use identified now, we will be able to grow in a better way, a smarter way, and try to guide, you know, development in places that, from an infrastructure standpoint, can be supported. So thank y'all, I just want to say that.
Any other comments or questions, or I'll entertain a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Lous.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes. Ms. Ball.
Commissioners? Commissioners, the next order of business is item 7.2. This is ordinance 4923-25. This is the first reading of ordinance for the rezoning of 21.43 acres located at 2875 East Oakland Avenue from R4 and B4 to R5.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Riley Putney, Development Coordinator with the Planning Department, and tonight in front of you is a rezoning of 2875 East Oakland Avenue. To orient the commission with the current timeline, the planning commission unanimously approved the recommendation on their July 8th meeting. Tonight is the first reading, and the public hearing for the rezoning will be August 21st, with the final action being September 4th. To orient the site, it is at the corner of East Springbrook and East Oakland, as depicted in the red outline in the star. The request is to rezone a split parcel of R4 medium-density residential, B4 along the East Springbrook side, to R5 high-density residential, to accommodate a multifamily development of 254 apartment units and six townhomes. That would require a maximum height, building height of 65 feet rather than 35 feet. The density is not changing with this request, it is just so they can utilize some four-story buildings rather than two-story buildings. With it being a residential rezoning, there is a concept plan requirement. So you can see on the plan, the seven apartment buildings and the townhomes on East Springbrook are located there. The four-story buildings are on the interior of the lot, so they're not adjoining the residential in less-dense uses on the perimeter of the parcel. There are clubhouses and amenities being provided, as well as a landscape buffer that encompasses the entire site. With this being a concept plan, any major changes will require to be, to come back to both Planning Commission and City Commission for approval. Current conditions of the site, it is vacant, heavily vegetated, and has various slope changes. Water and sewer services are available, and a traffic impact analysis has been completed, and the requirements are being met on the concept plan with one ingress and two egress lanes on East Oakland, and one ingress and one egress lane, and a deceleration lane on East Springbrook. That would be provided at the cost of the developer. The current zoning of the site, as mentionedly stated, is a mix of R4 and B4, and this particular site has zoning of almost every caliber surrounding it, including residential, industrial, and a mix of commercial uses. And again, the request is just the R5 for the 65-foot maximum building height. The bridge plan, future land use, the current 2020 plan calls for this entire corridor to be commercial, but moving into implementing the Horizon 2045 plan, as we just saw, presented, the place type calls this, calls for this to be a regional mixed-use, which with the, with the table here, we see that it is appropriate for multifamily and high-density, which is in alignment with the concept plan, with compactness and multifamily, and some open space that is used for residents, such as the clubhouse, pool, and dock parks that are provided. The concept plan and rezoning meet the elements of the current bridge plan by providing multifamily development options in appropriate locations, and implementing Horizon 2045 concepts and policies. It also meets strong neighborhood and quality and growth and development policies by providing infill development and different housing choices. The neighborhood meeting was held with one attendee in, in attendance with concerns just impact of traffic and the environmental impact on the wetlands on the property site. And staff recommends approval of the rezoning, since it is consistent with both the current land use and soon-to-be Horizon 2045 land use map. It eliminates a split-zoned parcel of R4 and B4, and it aligns with the policies of the bridge plan and Horizon 2045 plan.
Any questions or comments for staff? I would move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Lous.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes. Ms. Ball.
The next items are ordinances under second reading, and all of these will be second readings and public hearings. This is, oh, the first one is item 8.1, ordinance 4921-25. This is a second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to amend the zoning map of the City of Johnson City by changing from RP3 and R2 to R3 for the property located at 2343 Nob Creek Road.
Thank you, Ms. Ball. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Bryce McNamara, Planner One with the Planning Division. This item for your consideration is rezoning a property at 2343 Nob Creek Road. This is the second reading of this request, as well as the public hearing. And in anticipation of the public hearing this evening, I will be giving a brief overview of this request for the benefit of anybody liking to speak. Moving forward in this process, the third and final reading is tentatively scheduled for August 21st. The site is shown in the aerial view in the highlighted red area. This is on the bend of Nob Creek, just to the east of Nob Creek's intersection with Peoples and MedTech Parkway. This request includes two parcels, one zoned RP3, one zoned R2. This request comes to rezone both of these parcels to R3 to accommodate an expansion of the existing use, that being a church. There is a concept plan required for this rezoning. This depicts additions to the existing structure shown in the pink color, as well as additional parking areas shown in the gray color. All aspects of the concept plan meet the requirements of the R3 district. Any major change would be required to receive additional approval via the concept plan amendment process. Throughout this rezoning process, staff has not received any comments or concerns from citizens. Just to note, this request has remained unchanged since first reading, therefore, staff's recommendation of approval remains the same.
Comments or questions from the commission? Or a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Thank you. Okay. I will open the public hearing. This is to speak on this specific item. Anyone wishing to speak for or against is welcome to come up, and we'll have, much like public comment, three minutes to speak. Opening public comment. Public hearing. Public hearing for what you want to talk about will be at the next item. That's okay. It's okay, it's okay. We're getting there. Seeing no public comment on this item, I will close the public hearing. And now I'll entertain a motion. Move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Lous.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes. Ms. Ball.
The next item is 8.2. It's ordinance number 4922-25. This is the second reading and not a public hearing, because it was held on the first reading, an ordinance adopting a certified tax rate for 2025, for the 2025 tax year. Ms. Lous is making her way down.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Manager Ball. This is the, the reading, the second reading of the ordinance to set our certified tax rates. There have been no changes.
Any questions or comments?
I think it would be good just to go ahead and go through what the tax rates are, if you have those, and then why they're different by Johnson City's in three different counties, and what drives those tax rates.
Okay. So the certified tax rate is the rate that we, is developed and given to us by the comptroller. It is for truth and taxation following a county-wide reassessment. The City of Johnson City sits, I'm going to skip through a few of these here. So the City of Johnson City has three counties that we're a part of. We're part of Carter, Sullivan, and Washington, as you can see on the map there. All three of those counties, they, they make us a multi-jurisdictional city, which is what requires us to have the certified tax rate. Those three counties, none of them reassessed at the same time. They're all on a different reappraisal schedule. So Washington County reappraised last year, and that changed, that changed the tax rates for all three counties at that time. Sullivan County reappraised this year, and so that has again changed the, the tax rates for all the counties. And Carter County, the last time that they reappraised was 2021, and they're due for a reappraisal next year. We will be doing this again next year. The only time we, only way we would get away from having to do this would be if all three counties reappraised on the same schedule. The reason that we do the certified tax rate is to equalize the difference in the actual appraisals of the properties. The, you can see here that the reappraisals of Washington and Sullivan jumped their market values way up to 46 billion and 3 billion. But Carter County, you can see, is still way down at 27 million, because they're still at those 2021 levels. If you were to move Carter County to the market rates, market value that is being used for Sullivan and Washington, you can see it would jump up to the same as, as Sullivan. So that appraisal ratio, and the difference between the market value and the appraised value, is what drives their tax rate.
Just for clarification, the 3 billion, that's just the value of the property inside Washington County? That is not any money?
No, that is the actual appraised value of the properties in Washington County, also in the City of Johnson City.
Okay. I think we've lost our, there we go. Okay.
And what we do, when we do that, that certified tax rate, is we're looking to see what tax rate we would need to use in order to bring the exact same amount of tax money into the city as in the previous year. So we're not allowed to get more money from a property tax, from property taxes, when there's a reappraisal. We, we would have to actually raise taxes in order to get more money. So when they reappraise, we have to lower the tax rate for those reappraised properties. And the properties that have not been reappraised, we have to apply their appraisal ratio to that rate to determine what their rate is.
And does, the state sets the new rate so that it, it's net sum zero?
These calculations come directly from the comptroller's office, and we are just asked to review them and certify them. We are not allowed to, to make changes. So Commissioner Wise isn't here, but this is his, his pie, pie chart. The pie, our, our property tax revenue within the city, it doesn't get any bigger. We don't get any more money based on this reappraisal and these rates. Basically, we're just assessing the, the way that it's broken up goes a little differently. So Washington, you can see, is the big part of the, of the city's tax revenue, at 97.3 last year and 97.1 this year. The 0.2% of their, of their tax levy just got shifted to Carter County.
And I'm just channeling what I assume would be my inner Joe on this, in that I think he would also say that although the city does not generate any more revenue, the way in which, and although the tax rate went down, depending on the value of the assessment by the property assessor's office, you know, your individual property tax may have gone up or gone down depending upon that value.
Yes, depending upon the appraised value that, that the Washington County assessor, we use the Washington, Washington County assessor's values. We do not have our own assessor within the city. So based on those rate, those numbers and the rates that are calculated by the comptroller, that's what will determine what your actual property tax is. So the, the pie doesn't get any bigger the way it split changes.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
I'll wait on Ms. Lous.
I'll wait.
Ms. Lous.
Who?
Oh, not a motion, and?
We have a motion and a second.
Correct, Commissioner Brock.
All right. Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes. And Ms. Ball.
Item 8.3, Commissioners, is a second reading and a public hearing of ordinance number 4924-25. It's an ordinance to rezone Browns Mill Road from RP2 to RP3.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Callie McGrew with the Planning Division. This is the second reading, so I'm just going to make this brief overview. Planning Commission approved this proposal 7-0 on June 10th, and we are here on August 7th for the second reading and public hearing. The third and final reading and approval will be August 21st. The third and final reading and approval will be August 21st. Here's an aerial view of the site. This is, sorry, Browns Mill Walmart, and the site is 5.27 acres located along Browns Mill Road and the interstate. The rezoning request is to rezone from RP2 Plan Residential to RP3 Plan Residential. The applicant wants to increase the density to the maximum allowed on that land, 8.5 units per acre, for the development of 44 townhomes. In 2024, this site was rezoned to RP2 for the use of a pickleball facility, but the developer has since decided to pursue a residential use. This is the concept plan, and just high points on this, a sidewalk will be built from the entrance to the existing sidewalk at Butler Road. There is a left turn lane and a right deceleration lane required, and there is a minimum parking requirement of 88 spaces, but there's 115 developed, or depicted on the concept plan. This graphic just shows where the sidewalk will connect to Butler Road, which is the existing sidewalk. We held a neighborhood meeting for this proposal on June 4th. We had eight attendees, and the concerns were on the following issues of traffic and pedestrian safety, increased traffic volume on Browns Mill Road, school bus stop location, public transportation access, and possible site distance obstructions. Staff recommends approval to rezone the subject property from RP2 to RP3 based on the following rationale, that this proposed zoning district supports the city's goals for increasing housing supply, and the site is appropriate because it creates a transition between low-density residential and higher-density commercial. And it's also supported by both the bridge plan and our Horizon 2045 plan. Here's your decision options.
This is open to public hearing. Those wishing to speak for or against are welcome to speak. You'll have three minutes, and please speak towards this topic.
My name is Steve Pataw. I live at 212 Chickasaw Street. I'm not for this rezoning, nor are our neighbors. All the neighbors that I've spoke with understood that eventually they'd be homes, even townhomes, built on this property. But rezoning to add 44 townhomes is extreme, and the resulting traffic increase, which is already tremendous on Browns Mill Road, and the impact on safety affects Browns Mill and our neighborhoods. At the Planning Commission meeting in June, the developers told the city that this is smart growth, the smart thing to do, but it's not. It's overbuilding. The developers claimed there will always be issues of environment noise and traffic, and then asked the city, do you want 17 or 44 homes? And then they said, this is a slam dunk. This is not a game, and it's not who wins by the highest number. The city suggests proximity to the interstate is a benefit. Well, this property sits on the interstate, but like everyone in Johnson City, the residents will still drive five to 10 minutes to get to the interstate. Don't be misled by the suggestion of no immediate impact on the surrounding properties. This plan is virtually in the backyard of the home Mr. Whitson has on Butler Road, and is directly across the street from the home Mr. Roberts is currently building on Browns Mill Road. These neighbors and those of two subdivisions will be directly affected by increased traffic congestion as well as crossover traffic, which has already increased and affected safety in Sequoia Heights while walking, cutting the grass, checking the mail. There is no city bus access in this plan, and school buses would load and unload on busy Browns Mill Road during peak traffic times and on roadway where there's limited visibility. The city fire department says that a single lane into this complex meets the safety requirements. Ask yourself if 44 townhomes on a narrow five-acre track with 115 parking spots and one driveway in and out is safe. And then ask, is this the model of quality of place and quality of life that's described in the city's growth plan? This plan is just an opportunity to rush housing into an open space because it's available. The solution would be to maintain RP2 or greatly reduce the number of townhomes by at least 20, and then add another traffic lane for the resident's safety on the east side of this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Whitson, correct. Any others wishing to speak for or against this ordinance? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing.
I just want to ask, that one of the slides you had up that, when you had the neighborhood meeting, had about six or seven items on that. Can we go back to that? There we go, well, five. Were these addressed in the, in the meeting? Do you know, or were any of them going to go on and, and have more research done on them?
The traffic volume was addressed. We, we had our traffic engineer assess that, and what, he stated that with the left turn lane and the right deceleration lane, then a traffic impact assessment would be mitigated, and the developer has agreed to build those lanes.
Okay, all right. The public transportation access, I, I guess, that's what the gentleman just talked about as well. Is this not on one of our bus lines or that we know?
There's no, I don't believe there's a mass transit stop on this.
Do we have a way to assess when things increase, you know, should we add, you know, bus line there, and could we make sure we look at that real good? I travel this road as well often, and as I think many people do. I, I can't really comment on the distance obstructions with, with what the gentleman was saying as well, but we need to just make sure that's assessed very carefully, and I guess the traffic engineer was there to address all those things.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
No, I think just the comment, it looks like those, that decelerating, I mean, those aren't necessarily required on the front end. A traffic study could do that, so they're somewhat taking some preventative measures going above and beyond the front end.
Any others? Or a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Louse?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes. Ms. Ball?
Yes, I'm going to ask Mr. Trivett to cover this one.
As the city manager goes down to the podium, I'll read the heading on this. This is item 8.4, ordinance number 4925-25, second reading and public hearing, an ordinance to amend Title 8, Chapters 1 and 2 of the Code of the City of Johnson City.
Mayor? Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the Commission, my name is Kathy Ball, and I'm your city Nothing has changed since the last time. We only have one item that I wanted to present to you today as a change. The last time that we were here for the first reading, there was a request to look at the boundaries for the downtown district. Since we have met with the downtown business owners, they had also, since the very first meeting, had asked the question about the equality of, of being singled out as a downtown district as compared to other businesses within the city. As a result of those two things, first of all, the question that the downtown business owners had for being considered as a downtown district, and just the bars within that downtown district being considered within this district, this area, and then the question that specifically that the Vice Mayor Cox asked about taking a look at those areas and nodes that extended beyond that, we consulted with state officials and legal officials to be able to evaluate the state law as it was written. And as a reminder, we were working off of this state code, and specifically, the code said downtown district means central area. So, staff was working off of that central area being just that downtown district in the map that we showed you before, when we consulted with them, the part that read or main business and commercial area as designated by the legislative body or municipality. And so, when we asked them, could that be considered any business or zoning area that can sell alcohol on premise? Could that be considered within that if the legislative body considered it and approved it? And they said it could. So, we got authority from the state to be able to consider that as part of that. As a result of that, what has changed is that the downtown district does include any commercial or business area that has the ability to sell alcohol on premise. And the updated ordinance reflects this within that ordinance. What has not changed, that the hours would be one, the tables have to be cleared by 1:15, but it does not mean that the business has to close by 1 o'clock or at any time. There has been some question about whether or not this would require to go back to a first reading, and I'm, I'm going to ask our city attorney to address that issue, specifically the question of because of this change, should it, should it be required to go to a first reading?
What Tennessee law prohibits is making a substantial change to an ordinance that basically creates a new ordinance. And so, this amendment does not create a new ordinance. This is an amendment that really reflects, you know, concerns that were raised by the Commission and concerns that were raised by members of the community. So, this does not create a new bill. Therefore, we do not need to go back and start it over again in the process. So, again, an amendment, it's acceptable, and we can move forward on the second reading.
Thank you, sir. So, with that in mind, the map that, that includes the area the state has allowed is included as shown. It's not referenced within the ordinance because the wording includes any business that is allowed to sell, sell alcohol on premise. So, again, the end goals, you can see that has not changed, is to have a safe and thriving community. This is the second reading, and this does allow for, for a public hearing at this point. If there are no more questions for me, I'll return to my seat.
Any questions for the Commission? So, Kate, this is it?
Well, and before, can, can I just make a comment for?
Sure.
You know, I got on the city commission, I didn't even think I would do it this time last year. I am not a political person by nature. The city is not a, from what I had always seen, the commission was not a political commission. We've got a really special city, and I've loved growing up here. And when I did this, I wanted to get involved, and, and we have some of the best schools in the state. Our, our scores go up every year. Our fire department has this insurance rating, it's a, it's a one, so it keeps all of our homeowners' insurance significantly cheaper, and business insurance. The, I mean, our waters, we have three sewer plants. Most communities are lucky to have one. We have three sewer plants, we have two water sources. One's a natural spring that we're still maintaining. I mean, the, the, our library has 45,000 circulation a month. The next closest in our area is Bristol at 18,000. I mean, really special things that we have, and I wanted to make sure that this stuff stays special. And getting in here and dealing with some difficult stuff since I've gotten in here, this 1 o'clock topic, I had no idea it was even out there when I ran. I, I am always, and I didn't know how I felt about it when it came up. But I can tell you that since November, when this first got on my radar, when I didn't know what I felt about it, what time it was, there were, there's been seven shootings and stabbings downtown in five months, and four more attempts. No one has talked about that tonight. You guys have gotten up here, and there's been some good comments, so don't get me wrong, but personal attacks against any of us, we're not a unified body. There's five of us. We're all different generations. Some dress, but I'm always going to have food on me. I'm never going to be put together. I'm going to have a stain. Like, we're not a unified body. We can't talk behind closed doors. There's sunshine laws. We can't be in a room without the public notice, if, all of us, and talk about public business together. And you guys have three minutes to come talk to us. Three minutes to make a good case that maybe we haven't thought about, how things can look different. The Bitcoin stuff came up, and I guarantee you that there was a lot of really good comments among those meetings that helped get us a different direction that I think we all probably felt good about at the end. But we needed productive comments. Personal attacks do not help us get where we all may want to go. Saying I have, I'm not scared to have property downtown. I love it. I love our community. There's nothing I will hide about having property downtown. There's no conspiracy theory. There's been seven shootings and stabbings since February. That's not normal for our area. Four more attempts. That's, I mean, 11 in five months, two a month, one every other week. That's why we're talking about this. Nobody wants to hurt people or businesses. I have friends that have late-night businesses. I had a bar for 10 years in Knoxville. I personally changed our hours, and we did a lot better, by the way. That doesn't have effect with this. But constructive comments back to us could help find common ground. And so, you guys have three minutes to come up here and help find productive solutions because we have a great community, and getting to this political nonsense and these conspiracy theories is very frustrating when we're trying to find solutions. And we have different perspectives here. We're not all always on the same page, and we need good feedback to be able to get where we need to go. And what we also need is when you talk about transparency, and people here that are upset about this, that came and said their piece three weeks ago at a meeting, didn't even have the courtesy to stay and listen to the presentation that we were all going to hear for the first time. People talk about, I had to miss my son, but my son turned six a couple Thursdays ago. I missed it because I was doing stuff for our city and our community, and I'm okay with that. That's why I did this, that's why I ran. I knew there was going to be times that were tough and tough decisions, but I thought our community would at least be a little more productive in conversation. So, you got three minutes. I would encourage you to be as productive as possible so we can try to have common ground.
Thank you, Commissioner, Vice Mayor. And I would just ask a couple other things. One, if you spoke at public comment, you're more than welcome to speak at now, but I would ask that you have respect for those who haven't spoken and allow them to go first. And, yeah, so we'll open public hearing. Oh, sorry, one other thing. If you've heard, if, if somebody's already said something, you don't have to repeat it unless you really want to, but feel free to come up and say, I agree with that person so we, we can hear from everybody.
Hi, I'm Tommy. I'm a bar owner downtown. I know you guys, you know, we try to talk as best we can. We have, I personally worked with downtown associations, the, the Washington County Economic Development Council. I pressure wash sidewalks. I've done festivals downtown. I run a business. We've done shows at Freedom Hall. I'm asking that you curb this. When we asked at our first meeting with Ms. Ball about the police presence, you know, we, we paid for officers to be downtown. We have, you know, asked for help from the police department, and it's We have, you know, asked for help from the police department and it's just been told us, you know, we don't have the resources. That's what we've been told by that. We contacted Washington County because we had to ask the question, have you all asked them? And you know, you're going to, you're going to understand that people are going to be mad out here. You're going to understand that there's probably not everybody that could be here because these are our hours of work. These are when we work right here. Our hours start sometimes at 5:00. They start from noon up until 3:00 a.m. We have a certain amount of time. We're entertainment. We're a nightclub. When you curb hours, you're not only hurting business owners, you're hurting other businesses, you're hurting people who work downtown, bartenders, even people who, I have a 10-month-old baby, 11-month-old today. But, you know, you're hurting more people than you think you are. And we're just asking you to curb this for now. Let us see what Washington County can help us with because from what I, when we talked to them, we understood that you all haven't talked to them either and they are a resource that we could use. We asked in the first meeting, can we get our own security? Can we pay for more officers? Will Washington County help? And we were told, we were told no on some and no answer on the other. And we asked in pretty much every meeting. So I'm just asking you to curb it. Let's see what Washington County helps us out with and let's, let's try to help the downtown businesses so that we don't have this. I'm sorry that there's a lot of mad people, but you have to understand, this is our livelihood. I've been doing this for 32 years, 22 years owning businesses downtown, just downtown Johnson City. And now, this, this will cut the legs out from under me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Breeze.
Excuse me, excuse me. Can you, can you give your full name and address just for record? Sorry.
Thomas Breeze, 227 East Main Street.
Thank you.
My name is James Zaraski. This is the first time that I've been here before, but I appreciate you all hearing this out. So in addition to being a working professional, I've been a regular at downtown bars and nightclubs for about seven years now. And I know what it's like at 2:00 a.m. and 2:30 a.m. It is wild and that you are concerned for the safety of the citizens and the issues that are happening here. But I actually believe that deciding to cut off at 1:00 a.m. would increase the amount of incidents and decrease the safety of the city. And the reason that I believe that is at 1:00 a.m., downtown is very highly populated by students and people enjoying nighttime activities. So as that 1:00 a.m. approaches, what is going to happen is people are going to increase their drinking significantly at a high rate. And so this would result in a lot of higher drunkenness levels that are released into the streets at that time, which would increase the amount of egregious action, drunk driving as well. In addition, college students are still very much awake and wanting to enjoy socialization at 1:00 a.m. I know this because, I mean, I'm 30, but I still like to be out there, right? And I know that you guys might not be out as late as we are, but at 1:00 a.m., people, people still want to do stuff. So if you do decrease that, then the incentive for young people to be drinking downtown will be greatly reduced. So then they'll drink more in dormitories, they'll drink more at house parties and fraternities, which would not only be unsupervised, but it would result in actions happening in the residential area, which I know that the constituents would not want. So I encourage you to meet the downtown businesses. You've seen that there is a lot of people that are, you know, resistive to this. So my request is that you guys consider potentially a 1:30 or 2:00 a.m. cutoff instead. Figure, and you can see the results of that during probationary period and if, if it gets better. Give them the opportunity to explore some of the others now that they know that the commission is concerned about this. Do you all have any comments in my remaining time?
We'll comment.
Yeah, they're good comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Gina Hall Crowe. My husband was Len Crowe. He started the first bar, The Crowsnest, in Johnson City. You all aren't looking at the overall picture. Last weekend, we were packed because Bristol ran out of food and drink. Our hotels were full, our bars were full, people were eating late. You've got two races. You've got the spring race, the fall race. The motels are full and they come back to those motels and go to the bars and the restaurants to eat. I've got six Texas Rangers that come in twice a year. So if you all are going to pass this, I'm going to tell them to go find another hotel somewhere so they can have a vacation. Not just that, you've got the Apple Festival, you've got storytelling, you've got Rhythm and Roots, which is going to pack this place again. So if you want to keep the business in Johnson City for these people, you better get something worked out so they can do like they've always done, or you're going to lose them. They're going to go somewhere else to stay and eat and drink. So I think, I think you should give this Washington County a chance to get Johnson City downtown under control before you go into this because you're going to wind up losing money all the way around. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. My name is Grant Shirley. I live at 902 Ashley Road, apartment 190. I'm an ETSU mathematics graduate and I'm here to talk about the last call bill and why I think we should all strongly oppose it. Let me be very clear, there is a serious crime problem downtown and we need to prevent harm, not just react to it, by addressing the root causes. None of us are unaware of the facts and they cannot be ignored. Anyone who is knowingly allowing violence to persist in the name of profit is fully complicit in that harm. However, and this is an extremely important decision, so if you only hear one thing I say tonight, please hear this. This is not a legislative problem. This is an executive problem. Crime is already illegal. New laws are not the solution. We need active enforcement from businesses and private security as well as local law enforcement. On Tuesday, Sheriff Sexton sat down with downtown business owners and announced that the Washington County Sheriff's Office is setting up a task force to provide additional late night enforcement downtown. It's enormously refreshing to see a public leader who listens, shows up and communicates outside of his required official meetings and puts his money where his mouth is when it comes to serving his community. He's asking you to give the county six months to step in and make a noticeable impact before moving forward on this ordinance. For the love of this city, take him up on his offer so you can see how good things can really be downtown. It would be honestly weird and suspicious not to, and in fact, it's astonishing that a group of people who say they've tried everything hasn't tried this yet. And finally, I've got to address the sneaky redefining of the terms of this bill this late in the legislative process. I don't see how even someone who might otherwise be in support of this bill could support playing technicalities like that. I'm not going to waste much time addressing such a clear case of creeping government overreach, but I will say this, everyone on this side of the podium knows where downtown is. If you don't, then ask yourself if you're spending enough time in the community you're meant to represent. Since the Sean Williams case, public trust in this city's leadership is at an all-time low. This is your chance to start fixing that. If you do decide to go forward with this legislation after the sheriff's six-month window, please, you owe it to the public to put it forward to a voter referendum. This is an enormous sweeping change with a massive impact on our local economy. People's lives and livelihoods are on the line here. Please, you know, I guess that's all I've got to say. Godspeed and go Bucks. Love y'all. Thank you.
Let's, let's solve the real problem together. Like you said, the problem is the violence. We want it to stop. We want it to stop too. I think that letting the sheriff give it a try for six months is a good suggestion. One thing that nobody said tonight is that telling us how to run our businesses isn't maybe where you should be going into. And telling us when we need to change how we sell alcohol isn't actually solving the problem. The problem is the violence. The problem is how to prevent the violence. I think our police department and I think the county sheriff department, they have the solution for us. We support that. We also support you. But let's work together with that solution. This solution puts a restriction on our businesses that isn't going to help anybody. That's all I've got. Thank you very much. Keith McCoy, 308 East Main Street, Mulligans.
Katie Lorraine Pierce, 205 Colonial Way. My boyfriend and I own Nelson Fine Art and Ascotos and a future event space that's going to be multipurpose and all about the community. I had prepared some, I have to say, I'm not my best self right now. I had some dental work that has put me in a considerable amount of physical pain. All I want is to be on the couch, but I am here because I love this place. I had prepared some remarks that I don't know if I'm going to even read because they are very loving and kind and trying to build a bridge, but I don't always see that the city is trying to build a bridge with us. I have lived downtown for 18 years. I have invested so much of my heart and soul and I, I feel like there are decisions being made where I want to say, have y'all been here? Have y'all seen it? And even with the violence, it's always been violent. Like, I, for 18 years, I've been playing the game fireworks or gunshots. And so for now, it to be such a sudden concern is very... I'm getting myself off rail. I also see the people who have consistently shown up and they're, it's mostly the bar owners, it's Newman's, the Hideaway, Capone's, like the bars that people look down their noses at that have been the spine of this community, that have shown up when nobody else would. And now we're thriving. And now we're going to throw them under the bus now that we're doing well instead of... I, one thing that I do want to say is I want to thank you because y'all have done something that is so massively unpopular that you've gotten many people interested in local politics. You've gotten people to organize, speak up and show up and learn how to be more involved and I hope that keeps happening. Thank you. I'm going to go home and be on the couch.
I'm Paul Boynton. I own a bar in Johnson City that is initially not affected by the original policy, but now appears to be. I probably wouldn't be directly impacted, but I felt the responsibility to come down and just voice my concern. The first thing, Ms. Ball, you asked Mr. Sealy if we had a legal responsibility to have a first reading. I think there's an ethical responsibility because we have widened vastly the people that are directly impacted. I think a delay in this process is, is warranted just in a responsibility to the constituents. The process of arriving at this, you know, we can stop a lot of accidents on State of Franklin by closing it for three hours a day. I don't think that would be a reasonable solution. I'm going to keep my comments real brief. What is it about the character of the people of Johnson City that we can't have bars open until 3:00? Knoxville does it. Asheville does it, not till 3, but till 2:00. This is a feature, not a bug, of a place that has social gathering places. Crime is correlated with economic well-being and the gathering of people. The more people you put together and you mix alcohol, yeah, you're 100%, you're going to get more crime. That's just a feature of having a community space where people can gather. The more people they gather, the more crime you're going to have. So I just don't see this as a, as a solution unless the real argument is the character of Johnson City is just different from Knoxville. If they can handle it, why, why can't we? You know, that's my simple question. Seven shootings, you know, the things, thing with statistics, you know, if two people were shot on New Year's Eve, that doesn't mean you're on pace for 800 murders a year. It's a, it's a small sample size. Crime is correlated downtown. The fact that we have crime downtown, I just don't think that really is pertinent to this. If you're going to have a, if you're going to be a place where people can have a drink, people can have fun, people can gather, you're going to have to deal with crime. That's all I have to say.
Adam Stallings, owner of the laboratory, there was just a few things that I wanted to state that I didn't have enough time to, unfortunately, okay? The biggest point that I think that this board and this administration needs to take into consideration is that none of these incidents actually occurred inside any of our, our spaces, our respective spaces. They happened on city streets, city alleyways, city parking lots and city sidewalks, you know? And so to hold us responsible as business owners for something that the city is responsible for, the city is responsible for protecting those areas so that our patrons, our, we as business owners, our employees can go to these, our places safely, okay? And not providing that safety is, is your responsibility. If they are to respond to that, it's on you. It should not be upon us by any measure. So I'm asking you, as humbly as I possibly can, you know, to, to give this a try. Let these officers come in for the next six months. Let them see what they can do, you know? But give us a chance. Don't punish us, you know, because of something that happened on, respectfully, your property. Thank you.
My name's Dennis Ashford. I live at 234 Laurel Canyon, Johnson City. So I have my PhD in chemistry. I came here to work at Eastman. I do not own a bar. I'm almost 40 now, so I don't go downtown as much as I would like, but, you know, I still go down there. But I moved to this area in 2014 to work at Eastman and I chose to live in Johnson City because it is the most vibrant city out of the tri-cities. I don't think anyone can argue with that. But in 2014, there was still a lot of abandoned buildings downtown, the downtown was still growing. To watch it grow over the past 10 years has been awesome. I love it. I love it here. I actually work fully remote now and I choose to live here. And we just sat through hours of development, presentations, growth, all that stuff. And now all of a sudden, we want to make this massive shift in the way that we function in this town, the way people think about this town. Again, I don't go downtown very often, but I think of Johnson City as the vibrant out of the three. And it just feels rushed. I sat through the first presentation when it was a toolbag conversation, the tool, not pad, like a bag. And it was billed as, as all the crime was downtown and now it's the whole city we're talking about. So that's, again, it just, it feels so rushed. I didn't even know about the sheriff comment. That's a, that's a big deal as someone who, I live in Boones Creek, so not really downtown. Let's see here. So just, again, this is a massive change. I chose Johnson City because it's the younger, it's vibrant, even if it's not actually younger, it feels like it. And these are kind of moves that have huge impacts. I mean, even for people who don't go downtown, they hear this, they see it, and it's a big deal. They're going to go to Bristol, they're going to go to Kingsport. Because guess what? They don't have these rules. They deal with the same things that we deal with in our downtowns. They deal with the same things that we deal with in our downtowns. And so, just, this is a rhetorical question. Let me ask you, why is Johnson City the fastest-growing city out of the three? It's because it is, people want to live here. They just do. It's a vibrant, it's a vibrant city in all respects, and the downtown, and the nightlife is part of it, you know? With nightlife, you get crime, and there's, there's, we got to solve it, there's got to be ways to solve it, but this is just cutting the head off the snake, and that's not the way, I think, to go about that. So if I cannot convince you to say no or vote no on this, may I ask you at least, take, calm down, take your time. This is moving way too fast. But if not, let us vote on it. Let the citizens of this, of this city vote on this, and then, then you can't really argue with it. And thank you.
My name's Sean McCoy. As you can tell, I'm with Mulligans. My father already spoke. One of the things that he's impressed upon me, and I'm 44, is it's much, much easier to get people to do what you want if you're sweet, okay? And I believe in that wholeheartedly, even though I'm a redhead and I tell people, do things with themselves on a regular basis, just because that's who I am. But, one of the things that is endearing to me about Johnson City, unlike other places in the Tri-Cities, or northeastern Tennessee, or even southwest Virginia, is I want to be here, okay? I came down to school in the late 90s, went to Emory &amp; Henry, and I distinctly remember coming back down to downtown Johnson City in the late 90s, and it wasn't anything I was really all that keen to be all about. Whereas now, we've done everything in our, our power as a family to be a vibrant part of the 300 block, and I do my best to support all of my neighbors, okay? What I would ask is, and this is the only thing I haven't seen from reading ordinances and other stuff like that, and granted, I haven't done my due diligence by being at all the meetings, but I try my best, is for you all to say to us, what can you guys do to help us get rid of this problem? What do you all as business owners and people who work in the bars, what can you do to help curb the problem? Okay? If I could, I'd walk around downtown with a Nerf bat and smack people in the head until they stop acting stupid, but that's not appropriate, and they would have to arrest me, okay? So, what I'm asking is, please, let us know what we can do, because I know for me, I know for my father, my wife, my mother, all of my staff, we want it to work. We want all of us to feel safe. We want people to keep moving here. Maybe not as many people, but we still want people to move here, okay? And really, this ordinance, and I think a lot of the outrage that people are having here is they're confused, and maybe it's because they haven't done their due diligence as citizens than they're acting with you as the body that governs Johnson City. That's all I ask. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
I'm Bob Cooper. We reside at 203 East Houston Avenue. I'm trying to decide whether I'm the Lone Ranger or whether I'm General Custer. I hope I'm the Lone Ranger. I think the statistics and the videos speak for themselves. We obviously have a problem late night downtown. And I truly believe that, I speak for the vast majority of citizens in this community, that this, this decision to change the curfew is a no-brainer. It's probably not the best solution. Hopefully, over time, we'll come up with other solutions that, that will help improve and, and address everybody's concern. I'm afraid that if the present environment continues to exist, sooner or later, tragedy's going to strike. One or more of our fellow citizens will either be directly affected or have the heartbreak of grieving for a close friend or loved one. To the business community impacted by this change, we ask that you do your part, and whether or not doing your part is giving up the revenue that it, that you would be losing, you know, I don't know. I just know from a business standpoint that, that any business, over time, is going to experience some change, and we got two choices. We can either ignore the change and continue to do the same things the same way, or we can respond to the change and figure out ways, ways to take advantage of it. To those participants downtown, I only ask that you think about the impact excess consumption has on the choices we make. If we, if we, if both sides of this issue, or the both, both sides of the participant will at least address the, think about the issue, I think we've got a chance to help this community continue to grow and prosper. There's no question, we have a public safety challenge before us that requires the attention of all of us. This community has faced challenges in the past that in hindsight should have been dealt with, dealt with in different ways. These early-morning crimes and violence are our most recent challenge. The proposal before us is a proactive step to head off future tragedy. Lord knows, in today's world, we have enough danger and anxiety to deal with. Let's not add to that risk when we have this opportunity to do something today. Thank you.
I've got a business downtown, have run a business here for 35 years, lived downtown with Kate for about 18. We run Dos Gatos, Nelson Fine Art, and soon, 324 East, which will be an event space. When you brought up the, the stabbings and shootings that have happened downtown, you know, it's, it hit home because I'm downtown. And, but, so, in the course of all this conversation, I've, I thought, well, how much crime do we have? How do we, how do, how does our crime rates compare to other cities in the state, the state in general? So I just kind of deep dug, and our violent crime rate is lower than Bristol, it's lower than Kingsport, it's lower than the state average, it's lower than Murphysboro, and I picked Murphysboro because it's a not metropolitan area but has a large school, and it's lower than Clarksville, that also is a city, a not metropolitan city that has a school. So, think, think really carefully how much crime is acceptable. Zero is acceptable. And find a way to solve the crime without throwing the baby out with the bathwater. And I would also ask you all, come downtown. Come downtown at 1:00 in the morning. I know. It's hard to do. I've done it, and it's easy for me, I just walk down the street. But come downtown at 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning, and it's like, it's like, it's like a vibrant place, and see what's going on. Also, go and look at the parking lots on Saturday mornings and Sunday mornings, and look at all the bottles and cans that are in the parking lots. Those didn't come from bars. They came from other places, and they brought it, and they congregated in the parking lot, and they got drunk there, and they got in a fight. So, those are the things I ask, and I ask that you, like many others, put, kick this down the road for a while. Let, you know, have more conversations, see if the Washington County Sheriff's Department presence can relieve a little pressure on our city police. Thanks.
My name is Katie Houston. I live at 234 Laurel Canyon in Johnson City. I moved here as a single professional female. I have my PhD, and I chose, and I had a job in Kingsport. I chose to live in Johnson City, got an apartment right downtown because I loved the vibrancy of this area. I loved the culture, the nightlife, the arts, and the people. To the earlier comment regarding attacks and everything, I do ask for grace and open-mindedness. The comments and going tit-for-tat and all of that, it's not, it's not going to help anybody. And what I want you to realize is that when people feel attacked, they attack back. You know, ruling this out so quickly without a plan that helps business owners and employees and people understand that this won't damage their business, it won't make them be in a case where they can't provide for their families, helping people to understand that and having a plan to ensure that is critical. Otherwise, you will have these types of people, you know, you will have that coming out because people are scared. This is, these are comments coming from fear. So your citizens of your city are scared, is what this shows you, okay? It's not a personal attack, it's fear. And then the other comment, I love the data around crime and comparing that to other areas. As a scientist, I'm very data-driven. The bars didn't change, the population size did. So how does that impact crime in the area? It's not the bars that did anything differently. Johnson City is growing. So that's pure statistics, okay? And so I think we need to move forward, allowing the sheriff to do what he said he thinks he can do, but also, before we do that, have foundational data so that some anecdotal event can't take place during that time and change the narrative. We need data, we need it to be data-driven, that way it can't be politicized whenever we do that. And that's really all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you.
Sylvan Brinney, 166 Garland Way. First, I want to start thanking Commissioner Brock for bringing back my tax question, and Mayor Hunter, my Horizon 2045 question, and thank you to the staff for providing some answers. Vice Mayor Cox, all of this is politics in the pure sense of the Greek word, and it is what it ought to be, the affairs of the city. So I'm going to be very political, and I'm going to make that comment as the chair of the Washington County Democratic Party, a party that is fighting to reclaim people's power and that stands with our community here. Remember that last year, we fought to keep three readings. If we hadn't done that and hadn't won, right now you would be voting for the final approval and could just as simply disregard all the comments you've heard. So, three parts, again, on the process of amending the ordinance between reading one and reading two. When we did the Bitcoin stuff, we were assured you cannot change an ordinance in between readings, and so magically now we can. What is your process for deciding of making an actual change versus not? Second, there is a lot of mention of safety and the goal to, you know, make better safety, and we've heard a lot of comments about the rationale for that with the citywide extension, with the sheriff statements, but there is no discussion of the actual, actual problem of the proliferation of weapons. And Vice Mayor Cox, you alluded to that. So how about we have a real discussion about guns in this city? Because nobody wants to talk about it. Maybe it's too partisan, it's too political. Well, the good news is that 80% of people, Republicans and Democrats and independents here, agree on some common sense things like ERPOs and other measures that would help the JCPD. So my second question is whether the commission will flex its political muscle again at the state level, like you have demonstrated already that you can do, to ask for those things. And Commissioner Fowler, as the state executive committee member of the Republican Party, will you work against your party's blockage of all of those measures to make sure that our police has the tools that they need to bring safety to downtown? I think that is a better use of your time than the current dysfunction of my Republican colleague's county party. Third, should this ordinance pass? How is the commission planning to evaluate its effectiveness? We haven't heard about that. Some folks brought that up. I would like to hear what you're going to do in three, six, nine months to see whether, if approved, this has worked or not. Johnson City residents are closely watching both your decisions and your decision-making processes, and this doesn't have to be adversarial. There are a lot of people in this room, and they've said it again and again tonight, they want to collaborate. I know on Bitcoin, we finally found a really, really great way to move forward. I'm sure we can find a way to move forward on this issue as well. So please leverage those community resources. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dendel Rogers. My husband and I own The Feisty Pigeon Downtown. First of all, I am not even two weeks postpartum, so believe me when I understand not really wanting to be here. I'm sore and uncomfortable and hormonal, but this is really important. And when my husband and I decided to move to Johnson City, and first of all, we're the new kids on the block, you know, we've, we haven't even been here a year and a half. And we moved here because we fell in love with Johnson City and all of it, and when we realized there was no wine bar, we were like, we're all in, we're coming. And since this proposal has, has been initiated, we've been panicked, and we're not even a bar that stays open that late, but we know from experience and in the major cities that we've lived in, including Vegas, Chicago, Charlotte, New York City, that when you change the culture of an entire downtown, everyone is affected. Our bartenders are scared, our waiters are scared, us as owners, we're scared. And since you guys decided to start this meeting with a prayer, as a devout Christian, I would also like to remind y'all that in biblical times, weddings were five to seven days. People got trashed out of their minds, and on the third day, Jesus turned 120 gallons into wine. And I feel like, while this is, for, for all of us here, this feels rash, this feels shady whether it is or not, I feel sad and frankly appalled that us, your people, are begging you, begging you to change your minds, and begging you to, to listen to us, and we don't feel heard. We had how many meetings with Kathy where we feel like everything was about safety, 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 safety? We have now provided a solution for safety. And if we're going to talk about numbers and facts, 1.23 incidents was the number that we saw with the Johnson City stats, and a lot of those were trespassing offenses. I don't know about you guys, I don't know where you live, I don't know about the real estate politics and stuff, but we moved downtown. My husband and I and our newborn baby live right downtown on Market Street, and we love it. And we're going to sign a three-year lease, even though we're terrified, you know, of what, what could happen here. And, and I'm imploring you, you said to change your mind, to, to use our time constructively and, you know, not crazily and hormonally like I kind of wanted to do. But I will say, in Pigeon Forge, they enacted this, this 1:00 AM curfew on alcohol sales, and there's one bar that was open till 3:00 AM, and these are the numbers. He went from $2,000 in sales to $86 a night, and he is now permanently closed. It's the funky Buddha. And isn't that a damn shame?
Thank you.
You know, I have stores in Knoxville and Murphysboro, two places with a very vibrant nightlife, bars open late, a lot later than 1:00 AM. And I'm also 25, and I go to these bars. You know, you can find me at Tipton's Pub at 2:30 in the morning sometimes. And, you know, this is something that, I have a lot of friends who are the regular patrons at these places, and I'm also, you can find me at the bars in Murphysboro or Knoxville, and...
Me being down there, I'll tell you, the big difference is the police presence. You know, we talk about safety and how this 1:00 AM change is supposed to increase safety, but...
Does a clock take a gun out of somebody's hand? Or is the... Or is the police going to take a gun out of somebody's hand? I'll answer that question for you. The police is the only way that's going to stop that. And we found that solution. The sheriff said he can stop it, he's willing to stop it. So if it's really about safety, how is one AM a better option than increasing the police presence? I mean Sheriff Sexton, in his words, literally said that this is not going to work. This is not going to work. The only thing that's going to work is having the police down there. And, you know, I'd like to tell a story about whenever I was out at a bar down in downtown Murfreesboro. You know, me and a couple buddies had been out at the bars. And two of my friends, they started playing wrestling in the streets, right? Before my one buddy accidentally failed, the police were already pulling up. And that just shows that it's, there's, it's not the bars, it's not the time that's the problem. It's the lack of police presence that is the problem. And we can fix that, we can fix that. You know, going to one AM, you're just going to see the problem start earlier. People are still out at one AM, you know, that's, think about how, there's a lot more people on the roads at twelve thirty than there are at two thirty. So you're going to see an, just an increase in problems. So if you really want to fix it, give the sheriff six months, see if that works, come back to it. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Dave Adams, I think you already had my address from the last time. I just wanted to address some of the comments and then go over the facts of the matter one more time in a more measured way. Objectively, this body does rank near the national bottom for perceived transparency and trust in local government. For people to come here and turn up the heat, that is a method of last resort. Vice Mayor Cox, we've spoken on the phone before, I believe it was a very cordial, very respectful conversation. Mayor Hunter and Commissioner Brock, we've been on the campaign trip before, we've, we've had great productive conversations. You know, when, when we're able to talk openly and transparently with one another, the heat does not turn up. I'd love to support your work, but objectively, trust has eroded. We keep trying to rebuild it. And yes, we need to talk nicer, but you need to get a finger on the pulse. We aren't just here to oppose you. You know, when, when I invoked my son earlier, that wasn't to boost my opinion, it was to make sure you understand we're doing this because we really care. We're not just here to oppose you. We, if, like shout at someone just online, why, why would I be wasting my evening to come here to do that? That's just wild. We're upset because it's, there just seems to be total silence when we try to constructively talk about solutions. You know, if, if we are to believe that this is happening in good faith, it's hard to hear from the city attorney, well legally, we don't have to restart the process. The person who works at New Beginnings, who's learning that in three weeks, they're not going to have a job? They don't care about the legal technicalities, they care about the ethicalness of what in the world? What am I going to do? It is, to them, it's going to be perceived as totally unethical. And in your hearts, I think you know that that is. That is a major fundamental change. You know, if I were telling you my address, I wouldn't tell you that I live in downtown Boons Creek. This is, it's such a wild contortion of it. You know, you, you have people who have come to help address the problem with policing. If, if there's a potential solution on board, why do we not want to pursue that? It's, we, we don't want to perceive negative, but when people bring forward these constructive solutions and the answer is blank stares, silence and direct disrespect, it's, it's hard for the heat not to get turned up and it's hard to not feel distrust. We, we want to move forward, we all want to make Johnson City a better place. No one wants people getting shot every other week downtown. That's awful, terrible. Nobody wants that, to even suggest that is awful. But we want to come to a table and reach some solutions. And if you're unwilling to move on the solutions being proposed, like I, I don't know where we go from there. I don't know how we look at that and don't get a negative perception. We, we want to believe in this body, but we need this body to work in our favor. Help our downtown. Don't, don't just cut it off, like, like others have said, don't just cut it off. Take the, the solutions that have been proposed here today, some of the feedback on the data that's been collected, take that and see if we can tweak this. There's, there's no rush, there's, no one's banging down your doors to make sure this gets implemented in three weeks. At least I sure hope not.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. Over time.
Sorry, thank you though.
Thank you, have a great one.
My name is Bruce Saturn. I'm a, live at twenty-eight twenty-five McKinley Road. I've been a resident of Johnson City for forty years. And for thirty of those forty years, I was a frequent patron of all of the downtown bars. And I just had to stop. My doctor advised me that you should not continue along this path. So, but the observation that I've made in the last ten years, I feel like the biggest change has been the increase in gun violence. And I fearlessly walked around downtown and I liked it because you could go from establishment to establishment and you're not driving. You could have a good time and take a cab home. I made a million good friends, still have some of them. And to me, you can get intoxicated, get behind the wheel of a vehicle and be charged with drunk driving. You can get intoxicated, put a gun in your belt and it's legal. Somehow that seems out of balance to me, but thank you.
Thank you.
So just to preface, hi, Micah Bray, twenty-three Charleston Court. I do not live downtown. I am a public servant. I have not had a day off in eleven days. Tomorrow is my last day of twelve days in a row of working. Very excited to be off, but still came here tonight after I found out what was on the agenda. So these are comments helped fleshed out by ChatGPT, but it reflects my arguments pretty well. In her book, The Death and Life of Greater American Cities, Jane Jacob argues that safety comes not from shutting down cities at night, but from keeping them active and visible. She called it eyes on the street, the idea that natural surveillance from everyday people out and about keeps neighborhoods safer. When streets are empty, that's when danger creeps in. Here in Johnson City, we've worked hard to build a vibrant, walkable downtown. People come out late to hear music, finish work shifts, meet friends or unwind. Cutting off alcohol sales at one AM risks hollowing out that progress. We shouldn't trade away our city's momentum because of a few high-profile incidents. I understand the fear surrounding recent stabbings and shootings. But as troubling as they are, the evidence shows that early cutoffs like this one don't necessarily reduce violence. A New Zealand study found only an eleven percent drop in weekend assaults after restricting late night sales. And Baltimore saw larger reductions, but only after cutting sales off at ten PM, a much stricter change than what's proposed here. What's more, public health researchers warn that limiting bar hours often pushes drinking into unregulated, unsupervised spaces, house parties, parking lots, private gatherings like others have mentioned, where violence can escalate without trained staff or security present. And most importantly, the public doesn't support this ordinance. According to a survey done by News Channel eleven earlier this week, only forty percent of Johnson City residents support cutting alcohol sales back to one AM. That's not a clear mandate, it's a sign this issue is deeply divided. If we're going to make a change this significant, I urge you to put it to a public referendum. Let the people decide in an open and democratic process. That said, there are real steps we can take to improve safety downtown. Invest in community policing and late night patrols. Expand lighting and security camera coverage. Support de-escalation training for bar staff and bouncers. Explore safe ride share zones or extended transit hours. Partner with bar owners and business districts on violence prevention strategies. We don't need to shut down the city earlier, we need to manage it better. In short, this ordinance is not supported by strong data, not backed by public opinion and not the most effective path to a safer Johnson City. Please vote no on this ordinance and if there's still uncertainty, take the democratic path and let the people decide. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Hey, my name is Sunny Singh. I'm one of the owner of Wonderland Lounge and Grill in downtown Johnson City. All I can say is every problem has a solution. As a bar owner, I feel we do have a solution for this problem. We all together can make a difference. You guys can not only blame the business owners for this mess. Let's all work together and make this city the safest place for night entertainment. We, all business owners believe JCPD, with the help of Sheriff Department, can keep the downtown safe. Please do understand, we have put our heart and soul to this business. We love Johnson City, we are here to stay. We don't want to take our business to Bristol or Kingsport or somewhere else. Also, we do own several apartments in downtown. People have rented those apartments just because they love downtown life. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is John Hearnholm. I no longer live in Johnson City, but I do frequent down here a lot and I've worked down here for over a decade. I don't know where you've come up with this imaginary number where between one and three, as a bouncer, security, bar manager, I felt I was more at danger between one and two thirty. No, those are actually the chill hours. I actually didn't feel like I was going to get in a lot of problems. The problems happen as people go to the parking lot. It is not the bar's problems, it doesn't matter three or one. You're going to have the same problems where people congregate if you do not have police presence there. The idea that like you neutered your police force by throwing them under the bus with Sean Williams and blamed them for not doing anything about it, but you paid out twenty-eight million dollars taking blame for it. And then every police officer that was in this town that was worth anything is leaving in droves. I have literally fought and bled to protect downtown and you are cutting out, you're cutting it at the knees for no real solution. This is not the solution you think it is. The problem will just be at one and one thirty if you don't rebuild trust in your police department again. I'm sorry, I'm a little shaky. I mean, I've literally fought back to back with some of these police officers back in the day. They aren't the problem. The problem is the backing and the transparency of what you're going to do since Sean Williams and how you're going to rebuild that trust and rebuild trust in downtown again. And this is not the answer.
Thank you.
Chris Edwards, four oh one five West Pine Street. I love your approach to ask for civility. Many things that were said tonight persuaded me in the way that I think. But there are also some things that have been repetitive that scare the bejesus out of me, right? Several people have stood up and said, no matter what you do, there's going to be violence. There's been violence for the last eighteen years. I don't know if it's fireworks or if it's gunshots. If that's the case, how do we know anything that we try is going to work? Here's my fear. Weeks ago, people were against police getting involved. They didn't want them anywhere in the city. Tonight, everybody thinks the savior is the sheriff. I say this, beware of wolves in sheep's clothing. They're going to tell you what you want to hear. Here's my concern. Are we really going to turn downtown into a police state? That we now have JCPD, the sheriff? If that doesn't control it, then what do we do? We bring in the TBI? Sooner or later, we've got to draw the line and say ridiculous. No one has stood up tonight and taken accountability for their actions. Here's what that sounds like. I was a patron, I drank too much, I did something stupid. I was a bartender, I over-served somebody too many times. I need to get better at my job. I'm a bar owner, I should have fired that bartender that kept over-serving people. Nobody is owning their shit that got us to where we are today. That's what frustrates me as a citizen. But I love your approach to civility. Here's my, here's my suggestion, right? And I think it's a fair one to consider. The attorney may actually appreciate this one. My concern is this, you started down this path. If you do not go forward with this and follow it through to its fruition, you have now opened yourself up to another lawsuit because you started to do something to stop a problem, then you stopped it and then God forbid, somebody gets killed. Somebody is going to sue the city. Here's my suggestion. I write contracts for a living. If you're not familiar with what a clawback provision is, look into it. Put a clawback provision into this. This clearly says, we do this for one year. We stop alcohol sales at one o'clock. In one year, if we reduce DUIs, if we reduce domestic violence, if we reduce violence downtown, if we can get the police to go in and all of a sudden we can go and go into a couple of bars and we don't see people underage, then you know what? You've earned the right to get back to three o'clock. Then everybody has skin in the game. Do good, get good, it's that simple. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Come on.
How are you all doing today?
Good, how are you doing?
Stressful evening for everybody. I'm Vic, I own Diablo Downtown. I've seen the anger and, and you know, I've heard that, that we are at one o'clock. But all, all I'm here to propose is do we have a, can we go for a mutual, work it out to where it could be two o'clock, one thirty? I would say more like two o'clock, they'll be happy. But that's all I'm, I'm here for. If we can get, get to a solution of this problem, because it seems like we're going back and forth. But that's all.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Hi guys.
Hi.
Whitney Bowman, seven oh two Edgewood Drive, Johnson City. Guys, I didn't prepare a thing at all. But these shootings, I, I'm very scared. I'm very scared to walk by myself because I've been abducted a few times and it didn't end well. So I get scared and I always have the picture and stuff like that. I do not feel scared downtown though. When I'm downtown, I know John's down there, I know Tommy's down there, I know the Tipton's bartenders. I know they're watch out, they're watching out for me. And I know that because they've done it so many times before. But I, my question is, who, what bar did someone get stabbed and shot in? What bar, what bar? It wasn't a bar? It was just because people drank too much on their own? Man, you can go down and get ninety-nines for a dollar and people will be throwing them all out in the parking lot. You, as you walk to Tipton's, you can see people trying to get drunk in their cars. So what are they going to do? Just go to their car and do it again and then drive away. I don't think moving it to a, a remote location is a good idea, safety wise. I don't think that's a good idea and safety wise for your DUIs. But let's keep, let's keep the girls safe. Let's keep the girls out and about in the town where people are around. And John is here and we're all keeping eyes for each other. But if we have to go away and go to house parties and things, who knows what happens? Let's not do that one. Let's pick the better option. Again, sorry I didn't write out a little essay for you. But yes, I'm sorry everyone's mad, things like that. But I think that we could, if we all talk and, and we all talk together, we can come to a good conclusion. Anyway, be easy.
Yeah, thank you.
My name is Ally McHouston. I'm the general manager and representing Tipton Street Pub. I wasn't going to go in this direction, but I have to, feel like I have to say. Some people have mentioned talking in hypotheticals about gun violence downtown. My employees are painfully aware of what can happen with gun violence downtown. Four years ago, but we changed. We implemented new things after that. We scan IDs, we warn people at the door. We, all of our security have to be trained in de-escalation and CPR. I'm working on getting all of my employees trained in de-escalation and CPR and safety certified. We have done these things and we've seen such a change. Like you don't bring guns in there, you don't bring knives in there. We are all on board. We try our best to keep everyone safe in there. And I think, you know, you can come down there anytime, you can go to Newman's, one of the places downtown and see that we are trying. You know, there's not a doubt that there is violence downtown and there's a problem. But I feel like we're trying and we want collaboration, we want mutual understanding. We want mutual understanding. We want to work with the police, we want to work with the city because we all want the same goal. We all want everyone to be safe. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Minu Singh. I'm one of the owner for Wonderland Bar and I'm a physician also. I moved to Johnson City maybe fifteen years ago. I like this city. I came here as a physician and I opened my bar and doing great. Now you are saying to close it at one o'clock. The question is, how you think it's going to help the crime by closing at one o'clock? Like Mr. Vice Mayor, you said that there have been seven stabbings. What has been done so far to stop the crime? So now we are trying to help. We are, you know, we have asked Washington County Sheriff Department to help us and they are willing to work with JCPD and we are doing our best to help you guys and help us because we want Johnson City to get better. But if we are not going to get help from you and we are going to get punished just because we own the bar, that's not going to help anybody. You know, we all want city to grow, we all want city to be nice and better. But just punishing us just because we are the business owners is not going to help the city. So I think you guys should work with us. We should all work together and help each other. And let's see how the Sheriff Department can help us. Give us a time, give us one year. And if you see in one year or in six months, if it's not going to change anything, you can go back to, you know, one o'clock. But at least give us some time so we can prove that things can change. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Abigail Honeycutt. Do I need to give you my address again for the record?
If you want.
Sure. One fifteen Beechnut Street, Johnson City, Tennessee, three seven six oh one. I'm starting to wonder after your story, Greg, if you've not been as manipulated and as removed and are feeling as paranoid as perhaps the rest of us. John, I don't think you remember me. I went to high school with you. And Greg, I've served both of you many drinks on many occasions over the years. I maintain, respect is not just given, it's earned. And if you talk to a great deal of many other leaders in this community, they'll tell you I'm quite charming. If you had returned my phone call, Mr. Hunter, you would know in the name of safety that mere days after I put my address on the YouTube channel rather than keeping written transcripts, I had a breaking and entering. Mr. Cox, you're on the email thread too. You could have called me back. But you're not wrong in that everybody is looking for the why. We're looking for the conspiracy, but that's not a mystery. So let's rewind back to the era that I was downtown and my most prolific time there, serving my drinks to both of you. That was the height of the Shawn Williams era. We had every right to be paranoid. We weren't paranoid enough and nobody hurt us then and nobody hears us now. So I'll tell you what you don't get to do to a lot of people who to Dave's point, care enough to show up, who don't have your education, who don't have your civic skills, that don't at all know how to do it. And they're here and they're embarrassing themselves and they're stumbling over their words and they're showing up and they're begging you for an ear, they're begging to be taught. And how degrading are you all to say, we'll talk offline and not call back? To diminish how paranoid we have every right to be? How attuned we are to every single lie? I am standing here today and I wish somebody would have called me back six months ago and meant it because there are structural changes. ETSU is thrilled to work on a shuttle service and the bar owners would love to fund it. There is so many metrics and methodologies that are infinitely more powerful than what you're talking about. So we're here and maybe we're not good at it. But we're begging, give us some time and start treating us with respect and then you'll get it.
Thank you, Ms. Abigail.
Which direction is this guy?
Towards you.
I'm not good with speeches, but I'll do my best.
You'll do fine.
Hello, for legal purposes, my name is Diane Michelle Broyles. I have been a part of downtown every day for eight years now. I used to live on South Rowne Street on the out-town lofts. I have watched downtown grow throughout the years and the violence that has happened within downtown. I would never once in my years ever blame the violence on the bars directly. Like I said, I'm not good with speeches.
You're good.
But I would never blame the actions of another person on bars that do not have control over other people. And I don't understand the lack of common sense with this. It makes no sense to me. And I'm not really too much of a political person, so you got me out of my hidey hole. I implore you to listen to the sheriff. I implore you to give the bars time. I implore you to listen to the people who are against this, that have been ignored time and time again. We are the people of this town. We care about each other. I started this town and stayed here ever since. The very first thing I did in this town was go to the bars. I was scared, I was alone. These people helped me. These people helped me survive when I was homeless last year. These people have kept me going. So I will always come to their defense. Do not blame others for other people's actions. It will not go well. Thank you. I hope you have a good day.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
All right, Joe Belavari, local alcoholic and out here five out of seven nights. I wasn't going to do a speech, but everybody got a little heated. It really is the common denominator. We watched your video from the last showing. We're looking at an underage group. It's the loitering. Let's look at ordering laws. That's what we need to hit this at. You have people in the parking lots, they, you know, they're kids. They're full of testosterone and whatever else. They're going to fight. It's common knowledge. I've been around when most of these shootings, most of these things have happened and stuff. I've tried to break up fights, you know, and help with the bar staff. It really needs to come down to presence in the parking lots. It's really where it's at. I mean, because you're not seeing it in front of the bars anymore, like Ally said. Tipton's, Newman's, these places, they're nipping it in the bud. You know, they have their staff right there at the door. They're doing their due diligence. So let's do ours.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? One more time, anybody else? Oh, well, did you have something additional or?
Yeah.
If you've got something different, yeah.
Grant Shirley, nine oh two Ashley Road, apartment one ninety. I know you said something about repeating and overly repeating, so I'm going to try really hard not to do that.
Sure.
I do just have some scattered thoughts. And of course, on my way to the podium, they all fell out of my brain, so I'm going to do my best here. But I think it's hard to underestimate how much of a gift a well-managed bar is for safe drinking. You know? When you're, and, you know, I say well-managed, people have to be keeping an eye on it. But everywhere I go, I've seen that happen. You know, I see people get cut off for being over-served. I see people, you know, making sure everyone's safely leaving. I see people, you know, kind of keeping an eye on things. And who's doing that drinking at home? You know? I might say my wife, but not everyone else is as lucky as I am. Who's doing that at a house party? Who's doing that sitting and loading up pre-gaming in the car? That is where the danger happens. And I also, I think, I really, really hope that the volume, by volume, I mean the number of people who have come, not necessarily noise level, the number of people who've come out here tonight really kind of drives home how important this is to everybody in this city. And, you know, I think we have a really good thing and it does need, you know, there is a lot of work that needs to be done. And, you know, I used to be one of the people who was really not fond of law enforcement being around. But now that I've seen, you know, the impact that can have on maintaining a safe environment downtown, seeing law enforcement around is a benefit. I have one more thing, I'm really sorry.
It's fine.
If I could have like a second to think. I got fifty-five, whoa. I just. I'm sorry. It had to do with a lot of, oh, Commissioner Brock, I want to say, the meetings I've been here, I really appreciate when you, when there's something that seems like a little bit more obscure or complicated, that every time you or someone else, but it's usually, I've seen it's you, takes the time to explain it. And I think that that can go a long way to increasing community involvement in local politics. I think that's a really good thing to happen. Thank you and y'all have a good one.
Thank you.
Sorry, guys, I've got six points to make. I had to write them down because I didn't write them before. The people committing the crimes are by definition criminals and criminals hate being around cops. Let's give this time to see if the extra presence downtown makes a difference. Second, as far as being understaffed downtown has technologies that will make one officer able to do the work of five and coordinate with street officers. Let's give that time to work and make a difference. The comment, if you, you know, if you find out you have termites in your house, call an exterminator, don't burn the house down. That's where, we've been saying this this whole time. The state has given you the power. They did not say you had to exercise that power immediately or at all. The number of things that the police department has asked us for and not received, zero. We always help out. Anything they have questions on, our camera's in the front. We've always welcomed any law enforcement in our business. And then the downtown bar scene gives people a chance for actual social interaction at a time when the world needs it very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just wanted to make one more small comment just to make sure on public record, we have the right objective idea about public sentiment. I had read a comment, I think it was in the press from a commissioner, that the calls you had received were two to one in support, which to me is just hard to believe. So I want to make sure that the data is understood, that there was a 2024 community survey that the city commissions every three years. And in that 2024 community survey, that is not what it showed. It showed about split with some not sure. What was it about thirty-nine-ish opposed, about forty percent for, and then a big block in the middle of unsure? WJHL ran a poll, that poll just closed today. I didn't check the final numbers, but I believe it was approximately two to one against. It was about sixty-five percent saying no to this resolution and thirty-something percent saying yes. That may have swinged mildly, but I just want to make sure that you have the correct data and do not have a misunderstanding. I want to make sure that we interrupt our biases on what we may perceive as public sentiment on this because all the sentiment I'm seeing is that this is overwhelmingly negative, approximately two to one. Thank you.
My name is Amanda Brown. I live at one seventy-seven South Austin Springs Road. Thank you for allowing me the chance to speak. I'm just coming as I've been watching all this kind of unfold on social media and hearing people that I know who work in the bars and waitstaff. Coming from someone, I'm totally on the outside now. I grew up here. I'm a forty-five-year-old stay-at-home mom now, so my days of going out are long gone. But I did spend a lot of my years through college going to ETSU as a server. And listening to people tonight, I can totally see the frustration between both sides. And I thought it might help to hear somebody coming from with not really getting in the race. That what I'm hearing is a lot of these folks aren't necessarily saying that there's not a problem, but they're saying that there is and they want to work collaborating to address it together. And from listening to everything, I don't think that it necessarily is asking too much to kind of give a little bit of time to not rush the decision. It is a large decision that's going to affect a lot of different people and their incomes and affect Johnson City. And I love this town, I love what it represents and I love living here. And I just wanted to kind of give my feedback as someone who is, you know, in it that I think that it's okay to listen to some of them and their real concerns. And someone brought up the fact that a lot of them are scared and fearful. And we know that coming from fear, we sometimes don't always think rationally. We don't always speak rationally. We see that nationwide. But I think coming together, working together, I think everybody wants the same thing. Everybody wants Johnson City to be the great town that it is. And I think that the violence is an issue that, yes, it does need to be addressed. But I don't know that this is per se the best way to address the concern. I just hope that you guys have taken the time to kind of look at all of the factors that affect this issue and take all of those things into account. So, and I think that takes time and you can take a little bit of time. It's been this amount, so that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Janet Williams. I live at one eighteen West Tolston Avenue here in Johnson City. Didn't plan to speak tonight, but I felt compelled to come talk. Lifelong resident of Johnson City. I started my first business thirty-two years ago in downtown Johnson City. I've seen it grow, I've seen it develop. I've seen it go from a ghost town with lots of homeless people to a thriving downtown area that's full of nightlife, full of restaurants. All along, we've had crime. There's nothing that's ever going to be in any city, in any downtown area, that we don't have some crime. We've, in the beginning, it was mostly homeless. You'd have broken beer bottles from homeless people living downtown. Now we've got underage kids that are drinking in our parking lots and on our streets, leaving the litter there that you can see. So I think that a couple of things that we're seeing, or at least in my opinion, has definitely been spoke about before, is the growth that we're seeing in our city. As we grow, we expand, we have more crime. And that's only statistical. That's going to happen. I also think that looking at one particular area with downtown, of course, rather than the whole city, which you guys have changed, really put an inconvenience on just one part of the city. But the other thing I think is just to kind of let us, you know, work together, again, hoping that the sheriffs might be able to help. Being able to have better, I guess, policing, if you will, or enforcement in our bars, which I think all of our bars, I'm a restaurant bar owner, or I guess more of a bar owner downtown. I also own another business on. I also own another business on Rowan Street. But I think, you know, working with, with us as a unit of now citywide bars, rather than just downtown bars, to come up with a better solution, to really think about this before we move forward. And it's been so fast-paced, and I know that's been said before, is just really like make a pause, maybe have another consideration, put this on hold for six months, evaluate how the new policing with like the sheriff's department help might be, at least get a better understanding and better visual. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey.
Hi.
My name's Dustin, I live downtown, live downtown, or close, about ten years now. I wanted to kind of add a different perspective, kind of see what you thought about this. It's actually Kathy Ball that brought this up a couple of years ago, when we had an issue, we were talking about homeless and how it was interacting with people that live downtown. Well, I think what she said at the time was that in order to have a safe downtown, is you want to fill it with people that are young professionals, that are right around this target age, right after college, people that want to go and live downtown in that property that is in downtown. Now, why would you want to live downtown? Is it because there's parks, maybe? Yeah? Is it because there's maybe a nightlife, there's a good music scene, it's a great place to meet people? Well, I personally don't feel unsafe in any of the bars downtown. I don't feel like I'm in danger by being around people that are drinking safely. Where I feel like the problem lies is in the parking lots and the places, the sidewalks that are not policed, for one, or two, sometimes things just happen. And I don't see it as a problem with the bars or any other venue that may stay open late for live music, which I think draws people to the city. And I think that's another point that really needs to be driven home. What draws people to Johnson City? Because I ask my friends, I say, hey, do you want to come up to Johnson City this weekend? Well, why? Why not go to Bristol? Why don't want to go to a casino? Because that's crazy. Why go to Kingsport? Well, there's nothing to do in Kingsport for people that are our age. So why do we come to Johnson City? It's because there is a bit of a nightlife here. It's because you can go sit and kick it with your friends and drink and, and drink some beers and listen to some music. So I ask my friends, I say, hey, why would you want to come live in Johnson City? I just got an apartment down here. What's the, what's the draw? What's the value here? What makes things better? What, what lines the pockets of people that may own stuff downtown, whether it's a business owner or a property owner or whatever else? It's that draw for the people that want to come be here. So I remember there was an article just recently that came out, talking about how Johnson City was the number one move-to place, or, well, I don't know if you saw that, I don't even know how real it was, but that just kind of sparked the idea. You know, why do we want to be here? And I think that's the most important question you have to ask yourself. And like I said, that's something that I, that I picked up from you, Ms. Ball, was that we have to fill the area so that it is safe. And in order to fill that area, I thought, why would they cut the hours till one o'clock? Now I can't be on the road past one because they're going to send all these people that are not done drinking out to the bar, out to other bars, they're going to send them out to the liquor stores. What are all the college kids going to do? Like, it's a college town. They want to go out and party and they want to drink. Are they going to do it at their home? Are they going to go down to the bars? You've heard it twenty-eight times, people, we, we live, we live in reality, they go sit in the cars, they drink, they pregame in the cars, they go to the bars, they drink after the bars, no matter if it's one o'clock, two o'clock, three o'clock, four o'clock, or they leave the casino at seven AM and keep drinking. It's not an issue with the one to three. So I, I'm just asking as just a purely observational thing here, what was the significance? Was there data to support that those two hours, we'll do that, I'm sorry. Anyway, to, to wrap up what I'm saying is, if you really want to draw people to this town, I don't think you're going about the right direction.
Thank you.
Dustin.
Dustin.
Sir.
Sorry. Your last name?
Swayze. Good last name.
Hello, city leadership. I know that I spoke once, but I did have a suggestion that I think might be powerful in terms of solving this problem. So I think that, you know, crime fighting violence will happen when people feel like they can get away with it, right? And I do agree that having a great, I feel more comfortable when I come out of the bar and see police there. But additionally, I think that the brighter that it can be made, that, that will decrease crime as well. So, you know, the city, as a city manager, you know, I would suggest that you look into renting portable generators that have the really bright lights, right? Set them up and turn them on at one AM, so that when people come out of the bars at one, one-thirty-two, presuming that you listen to the community and vote no, then it will discourage people from loitering, they'll disperse and they'll go home, right? But yeah, I think that, that, that's really that all I had mentioned. So I suggest that you withdraw the, vote no, withdraw the motion, or potentially change it to two AM and have a compromise and figure it out from there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Adrian Rogers, one oh nine Cherry Street, Suite Twenty. One of the owners of The Feisty Pigeon, my wife and I, just wanted to go on the record and state my opposition to this ordinance. As my wife said, we are the new kids on the block, we've been here for a little over a year now. And obviously unaware of some of the circumstances leading up to the sentiment that the city has against law enforcement, members of the council as well, we've kind of found all that out on the back end as we've gone along. And I understand the aspect of kind of CYA, if you will, you don't want any other negative sentiment to come from this case that's being resolved and being paid out. I do not think that this is the way to go about it. I agree, Mr. Cox, that we should maintain a level of decorum and not make these attacks too personal. You have to understand, though, that this does feel personal and like an attack on our livelihoods. Therefore, you know, if it, if it does feel like some of the members of this, you know, congregation back here had left that aside and kind of gone for the jugular, now you know how we all feel as business owners. We are not, you know, unruly airline passengers who need to be parented by the pilot. You are speaking to a room full of accomplished folks, PhDs, business owners, things like that. I do believe that they deserve the respect to be heard. You've heard solutions as far as the city going to the sheriff's office ourselves, members of the business community going to the sheriff's office. We are boots-on-the-ground finding solutions, and it does not feel that that's being reciprocated from members of the council when we come and, and bring those solutions as suggestions. Therefore, I believe that that is kind of fueling that personalized attack because people feel like they're at the end of the rope. Last resort is, of course, if you are cornered, is to attack. At that rate, I will step aside, I will let other people speak, just wanted to go on and say, I vehemently oppose this and feel like it is detrimental to both the city and the community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I think everybody have just about spoken. So we'll close the public hearing and turn to the commission.
Can I speak?
Yes. All right.
So I for one really appreciate the change of attitude from the first people that spoke when we just started this to y'all coming up here. That was a conversation that we listened to, and we didn't feel like you were yelling at us, throwing things at us, saying we're idiots like I did when I first started the meeting. I had a really bad attitude when I first heard. So thank you for all coming up and being nice and making your comments, because they're heard much easier than somebody yelling at you that you just kind of shut off. So I appreciate that. So that's number one. If you look at the states, what time they are open to, if you go through the United States, there are two that are open till three AM, full states, and that's Indiana and Tennessee. Why? I don't know why three AM was picked by us. Probably because of Nashville, because that's where the people are making the rules and things. And they want to be open till three. They have a whole lot of people, big downtown area, lots of bars and those kind of things. So I'm not sure why Tennessee, I came from Oklahoma, most of them closed at one o'clock before I moved here, some of them stayed open till two, but that's, and everybody seemed to have a good time at bars and they made money. So I don't know that the three AM is a have-to to make money, but I understand if that's what you've been doing, it seems like a whole lot to cut it back. I moved here thirty-two years ago, and I came downtown and I ate dinner, and it's like, I don't really have to come downtown anymore, because there wasn't really much downtown when I moved here thirty-two years ago. And I bet everybody in here that was downtown thirty-two years ago would say the same thing. But commissioners before us, the people up here have been changing downtown, trying to make it better. And that's been going on for a while. The first thing was flood mitigation, because downtown flooded all the time. And we've made things that could have been culverts, could have been those things, but instead we made parks that flood and take away so downtown doesn't flood like it used to flood. That was to make downtown better. And I think it's a hundred times better than it was thirty-two years ago. And we don't want that to change. Now, what we do want to change is crime. And as you grow bigger, just as somebody said back there, crime gets bigger with a bigger population, it's just a percentage thing. So we understand that. How do we prevent that? I'm a physician, I take care of people, and we don't need any more people getting hurt or shot or those kind of things that we need to take care of. We've got plenty of sports and other things to take care of that. So we would rather not have crime in downtown causing injury to people and our citizens. Number one on my list is taking care of people. I've done it for thirty-five years now, I was taking care of people as a physician. So I got on this to make this town better, so my kids that moved away to go to college would move back here. And four of the five live in this area now. Got one that wants to move back, it's in Oklahoma. So, you know, I, I think it's doing much better, and I don't know that anybody would disagree, that it's much better than it was thirty-two years ago. And that's part, you look at us like we're terrible people, we've been trying to help, I promise. And this is not, anyway, I could go on for a long time, but I won't. I have a suggestion, because I've been listening. I wasn't here the first meeting, I was at another city meeting thing that I had to go to, so I wasn't here. But I would not mind, I don't know if it's everybody, but I wouldn't mind going to two o'clock and getting the help from the county sheriff to have more people downtown. It's still going to cost somebody. It's going to cost you more in county taxes to have those people here, because you're going to pay for them. It's not like it's free for the sheriff says he can do this, but somebody's going to pay those guys to be down here like they are, we are paying our police to be down there. And a majority of our police, after eleven o'clock at night, are centered in downtown. If something happens in North Johnson City, it takes our police longer to get there because we have more of our people centered down where the things are going on. That's just the way it is. So it's not like it's not going to cost us more and the taxpayers more to do things. So don't think it's, you know, unless the owners of the bars want to hire off-duty policemen and sheriff's officers. I'm just. I understand. And, and I'm sorry you can't speak to us right now like we. They were not interested in that, I specifically. All right, so I wouldn't be opposed to go into two AM, because the people will still be there later, because it's just stopping serving alcohol. You can feed them food till three o'clock or however late you want to stay, but if the alcohol cuts off at two, maybe some of the people who have maybe been over-served, I'm not saying any of the bars over-serve, I'm not accusing, I'm just saying it might be better for those people to hang around for a little while and still have people working there and still doing things, maybe not serving drinks, but have them there, have the people eat or hang around for a little while until they leave when they're not quite as served as they were at two o'clock. So I would not be opposed to that. I'm not saying we're going to do that, but this is just me. If it doesn't work, six months later, we can claw back to one, if it doesn't change things. And, and I would be all right with that, but that's all I wanted to say. So we're reasonable, I promise you, it's not like we're, anyway.
So first, just to clarify, I totally get being mad, and it's okay to be mad. And that's part of the process. It's okay to oppose as much as you want. All I was saying is, I have come here with fresh eyes, and there's a lot of baggage with Sean Williams, and there, it is a salacious story, and I've heard so many personal attacks, not tonight, it's, it's just been consistent since I've been here. And so that's why I think I felt the need to say to like, hey, there's three minutes and it, we want to hear something productive. So I, I don't expect people not to be mad, these are big changes that are talked about. I, I have, I've written down probably too many thoughts to kind of re-articulate, but there's a lot of people in this room that have thought very, very hard about different impacts that this could have. And there's a seventy-five thousand people in our city, almost. And you guys are a passionate crowd and very vocal, but we do hear from a lot of the city that has different perspectives. The reason that even the map was a little different was, one, some impact from people downtown. Majority of it, a couple weeks ago, were like, hey, if it's really how the law was intended, there was a lot of feedback over the last three weeks, really, of that. That, that's not done without that input coming. We, if we had a different plan, it would have been a different, I mean, that's from feedback from the community is why it altered. As far as questions go, and, you know, I've, I've got the survey with us, it, it'll be posted, I mean, within shortly that you're referring to, Mr. Adams, but, I mean, it's pretty significantly, you know, in general, how supportive of you of limiting hours, for very much, it's forty-four percent, you know, not at all was thirty-five percent. Public safety, eighty percent of people, almost seventy-eight percent thought it would be a benefit. Decreased disturbance in law enforcement, eighty-one percent thought it'd be a benefit. So, and these will be posted, and you guys can look at it. So I'm only saying that is there's a lot of information that has been gathered, it's not an arbitrary thought and a poke in the wind. We also do have a police force, we have a, a big area to cover, we have to cover gray, there's a lot of area to cover. And police, there, there's still a limit of what humans can do and how they can respond to the whole city. There's, you know, and I would also just say, whatever happens tonight, and, you know, there's another reading after this, is I, I have a lot of examples in Knoxville, because I did have a business in Knoxville, a bar business, for almost ten years. And I have a lot of opinions on why things look differently there than they may here. If you guys, I, I think a lot of the bars, somebody said earlier that a, a well-run bar is an asset to the community, and I, I agree. I mean, it takes a lot of work to build a, a culture of a bar to where you have zero tolerance for crime. And I'm not saying that, that takes a whole group effort, and there's a lot of bars downtown. And some of them, I, I tried to take part in all of our community downtown at different times. And so I, I just say, also think that there's a lot, there's, there's a lot of people in the city that have a lot of perspective, and we're listening to all of it. And also be somewhat open-minded, as we're being open-minded to hear, that if, if hours do change, and it's tough, and I, I had to go through COVID, and Knoxville shut us down for an extra six months, at half-capacity than the state required, and so we were half-capacity for six months. I, I get what it's like. But sometimes change can be good if it does have to happen. And there are a lot of people that I know that love to go downtown more often, that they felt comfortable earlier. I also think that a couple of comments were said tonight about how much drinking goes on in the street. Most, I feel like a lot of people, when, when the bars get going at twelve-thirty, a lot of, your patrons may have already had a lot to drink, and that doesn't put the servers in a great position to control things. It also doesn't do great for finances. I mean, if you have a lot of customers that come that have already had a lot to drink, they can hang out for a while and spend less money. So there are, you know, if a community rallies around something, it can be for a greater good for everybody. People may come out earlier, spend more money while they're out, not drinking in their car, I mean, seeing little bottles around town drives me crazy downtown. You know, being able to leave a bar and potentially go drink in your car and come back in, which may or may not happen, but that's something that is hard to control too. So I, I'm just saying that change is hard, but sometimes there can be a lot of good for it after the fear kind of. But sometimes there can be a lot of good for it after the fear kind of settles in. It's like, okay, how can we make this good for everybody? Because there's a lot of people that want to be downtown and take part of it that are not coming right now. And you, they're not in the echo chambers that we live in. So it's a little wordy statement, but I got a lot of thoughts.
Okay. Thank you, commissioners, for your comments. And to the public who's here, who's offered many opinions, some fact, some ideas. I appreciate that, and I certainly appreciate it the second time around. It was, we could hear you, and that's important. There are two or three things I do want to comment on. And the first thing is standing right back in the corner there, and that's our police officers. We've heard a lot of comments that there's no police presence downtown. And I know for a fact that is not correct. We have, excuse me, I'm talking now. When we look at the numbers and what time that they leave other zones to come down there, plus the ones who are in that zone, as Commissioner Fowler said, in, you know, southeast Johnson City, that zone may not have any officers because they've come downtown, particularly if there's an incident. I mean, if there's an incident down there, everybody kind of descends on the area. And so the rest of the city is not, you know, having the people in their zones for maximal protection. So, you know, the thing that is new for us tonight that I just saw on TV last night was the fact y'all have been to the sheriff's department and has come up with this plan. And I don't know to the extent what the plan has, what the commitment has been. You guys didn't invite us to that, so we don't know. And I think that's going to be a real important thing because many of you got up here and said they've committed for six months. I don't know if we have any, we've had a little bit of communication with them to understand maybe what their first steps are going to be. But, you know, I know a lot is resting on that. I hear this in what you're talking about. But the other areas of how we protect downtown will continue to grow from a technology standpoint to, you know, some people offered up lighting ideas. And, you know, those are all things we need to absolutely look into. To the rest of the city, Mr. Adams, I think if we probably did a citywide and everybody answered the survey, it would be overwhelming to change the hours of alcohol sales. It would be overwhelming if everyone, excuse me, I'm talking right now. It would be overwhelming if every citizen in this town, there's 75,000, and we're hearing from the other folks who are not. Excuse me.
Sorry.
So, you know, these are things because we are hearing, we are hearing from other people. Almost every person that calls me that's not in the downtown area thinks this is a good idea that we do. A couple of reasons that they give is the reputation of Johnson City. And that the downtown, the reputation is it's not a safe place to come, and I hear that often. And so we have to look at all those things. And I know there's other factors. There's no two ways about that. There are things that we have to address. But the violence that occurs downtown makes the front page of the paper, makes the evening news of all the media outlets. And that is occurring at a more rapid rate all the time. So that is concerning for me as a commissioner, as a person who, we don't run the city, but we look out after the well-being of the city by the decisions that we make. And so that's just something that we have to look at when we talk about quality of life. And a lot of people are moving here because of the quality of life. And a lot of decisions that we've made to create areas that are very pleasing to people, that they can take their kids, that they can, you know, gather, and it's safe. So there is another part of the city here, and it's big and it's growing for sure. We heard some comments about the crime rates, that we're less than several other cities in the state of Tennessee. What we've been talking about here and what's been presented here is the density of crime in the downtown area compared to other parts of our city. And so a big part of our responsibility is mitigating risk. And so when, you know, I don't have the numbers to say this is how many incidences occur every week, but usually on the weekends, there are always incidents that are occurring. And so these are all things that we have to really think about, be concerned about as we look at how we improve the safety, security, and reputation of our downtown city. We've put a lot of money into the infrastructure of downtown. It is the heart of who we are. I think I said that last time. I got pretty passionate about it, being someone who grew up here. I've known downtown for a long, long, long time. And so we're getting it at the point that it is vibrant. And I don't discount the fact that it has a certain vibe to it that people talk about all the time. Our, you know, and I will tell you this, if you don't think we listen, I listen. And I did call you back, Ms. Honeycott, you remember that. Well, okay, I'm talking now again, too. I'm going to put my grandmother face on. That's the way I talk to the grandkids. But I kind of lost my train of thought, and I'm sorry about that. But, you know, we have to really think through very hard about how we move through this. Commissioner Fowler has suggested examining the time. I'm not opposed to that, but I think we have to move forward in coming to a conclusion on this so we can move forward.
So just procedurally, you know, we vote on it, move forward. You know, I'm just curious what the sheriff has committed. It's been very interesting. And, you know, the sheriff is an elected official and does not answer to anybody much but himself. And so, you know, he's got to communicate with us what he's willing to do because right now we don't know what that looks like at all, right? So we have to act as if, because, you know, he's got a whole county to be responsible for. And so I am anxious to see what his commitment is over the next little bit. And I don't know what happens if we don't find that commitment out till two Wednesdays from now, and we've got to vote the next day. Can you? Well, I just, if, I mean, can you push a, if we felt the need to have more information? I mean, you don't have to start over if you say, hey, we need another time, right? I mean, you don't go back first reading if you say.
There's not a timing requirement, I think, to have the third reading. If it was passed tonight on the second reading, again, there's not a timing requirement that we have the third reading at a certain date.
Yeah. So if he doesn't give us an answer that we're, and an understanding of what he could do, and we don't have time to talk, and that's, we can just put on a, we can pick to put on the agenda when we're satisfied.
Correct, when the commission's ready to take it back up.
Okay.
Say one more.
Go for it.
So this proves to you that we do not talk about this outside of this meeting. We're not allowed to do that. And so my idea has not been passed anybody until tonight. So it's not like we've discussed this and we're going to vote one way or that right this minute. So this has just proven to you that we go to meetings and we talk, and we got feedback, and this is my idea right now. So I have not discussed this with anybody sitting up here. So just to let you know, that's, part of this question is how do we go from here? Because we don't usually do this. So, anyway, just explaining.
And at the same time, you know, we're, public safety is, I think, the most important thing. And we have, you know, me being here for six months, I've heard so much different stuff of just not necessarily trusting the police, and now it's we need the police. And I, then we have a comment on how we have one of the lowest crime rates amongst our peers in Tennessee. And that's because we have great police. We have great police. But we have a hole in our community where there is some violent crime. And it, you know, the study that, if you guys, I mean, I know a couple of you stayed, but it is a tremendous, a threefold increase in the last 18 months versus 2019 to early '24. And that's real. That's not made up. And we're not going to sit on our hands while this stuff is happening. And the community doesn't want to sit on our hands. So I don't ask that question saying I expected delay. I ask that question hoping that, you know, that we can get some great answers and keep moving to make sure that our businesses thrive. Because the last thing I would say is, I love our downtown businesses. I mean, I wish you were still here, but, you know, I'm kind of mad at the Mulligan's guy because he gave my kids way too much ice cream a couple of weeks ago on Friday when we weren't looking, and there's like six kids, and I had to deal with them for us tonight. Great, I mean, Capone's was my first memory of going somewhere with my dad. They had shuffleboard, and it was called Gatsby's, it wasn't Capone's then. But I, we don't want anything to hap, we want it safe, we want the bars to thrive. There is, truly, I think if you look at all the facts that we've looked at, I lived it firsthand, there is a way that bars can thrive earlier with people that might have higher ticket sales. And staff does get to go home earlier or do things after hours. There is, there is a benefit that could happen at a culture like that. Because most states don't stay open as late as ours. I was, and I was just at the Orange Peel, and the show's at 7:00. You know, go back, everything was closed that we could find, you know, even in Asheville. And they're, still can be a thriving community, but that is just a little food for thought. And with that, I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second that. I would encourage between now and third reading that we examine the hours thing.
Any other comments before the?
I will probably vote yes as long as we discuss this and decide we can change the hours on the third reading if we need to. So this is not saying I agree with everything going on, but just explain it again. If I vote yes for this, it's we're going to discuss it, talk to the sheriff, do all that before the third reading, so that hour could be changed. So just not wanting you to be mad at me for what I said and what I'm doing, so.
Any other comments?
Before the vote, I would just like to say a few things. I wanted to clarify a few comments or questions that were made, but I don't know that that's necessarily relevant. But one thing I do want is for the bar owners and the bartenders to realize that this isn't meant for you all. You know, I'm not a conspiracy theorist. I don't think people are doing things even though they tell, I trust, you know, if the bartender, Tommy says he's doing it, I believe him. I don't have to go see that. Like, I don't think it's the bartenders and the bar owners that are creating the problem. It's the people leaving and going to the parking lots, and they're drinking beforehand. I'm sure they are. They're drinking in the bar, and then they're probably drinking more when they get back. So, you know, it's the people who are coming down in those late hours that are creating these issues. So again, like, I'm in a heavily regulated industry. We have legislation that comes down on us all the time that affects how we run our business, what it costs, and then ultimately how we deal with our customers. And we pivot, and we work around those things. But, you know, and as far as studies, you know, I've read a lot of studies. I read the one that the gentleman mentioned about Baltimore. I don't think 10:00 PM is appropriate. There, I mean, it's significant, the statistics on the improvement on crime. Other studies talk about, you know, for every hour, change either up or down, there's a direct correlation to violent crime, either up or down, about 16% per hour, change. There's a lot of data out there. And, Mr. Adams, I know a lot of people here are new to coming to commission meetings, and it's intimidating, but I feel like you're pretty comfortable. So I hope you know that I'm not trying to single you out. But the community citizen survey, there were questions, I'm not sure if you had the whole packet or happened to miss it, but there were specific questions asked of Johnson City residents regarding reducing the hours of sales of alcohol. And it was pretty strong and overwhelming that there was a positive, I can't find it right now, but.
To clarify, there was a question of do you support reducing the hours? And that one did not ask for it. And then it asked if hours were reduced, would it improve these things? Those ones did show good things.
Dramatically. It'll be, and it'll be published for everybody to see.
And this survey was done in November of last year. So before the public discussion about all this, you know, hit the airwaves. And so might ask the same question again, you know, and you get totally different results, so.
Can I add one more thing? I saw this survey tonight for the first time, so it's not like we've been hiding it. I just saw it at our meeting, and it was discussed tonight, and it's going to be on the website, I think, tomorrow. Is that right, or sometime very soon? Yeah, so it's not like we've been hiding or trying to keep it away from people, so. The final one, this big packet I got tonight to look at, so.
Ms. Lass?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
Ms. Ball?
The last item on the agenda is item 9.1, annexation, is owner consent annexation of Boons Creek Road and Christian Church Road. Is to consider a request to proceed with the annexation of approximately 67 acres located on the north side of Boons Creek Road.
Good evening again, mayor, vice mayor, commissioners. I'm Callie McGrew with Planning and Development Services. This is a voluntary annexation of 67 acres at Boons Creek Road and Christian Church Road. Request to proceed. So this is our timeline. After the request to proceed, this will go to Planning Commission if we decide to move forward, and then final adoption September 18th. This is the parcel of land here. It's located right near Boons Creek Christian Church and the Bright Ridge facility. And this is Christian Church Road and Boons Creek Road. As mentioned, the property owner requests the annexation. They would request the zoning assignment of B4 commercial district for a commercial development. And this parcel is contiguous with the city limits and in the urban growth boundary. The surrounding zoning of this parcel is B4, RP5, and R4, and currently zoned PRBD, which is Plan Residential Business District in the county, as well as A1. I'd also like to touch on that this purple is a special tax district overlay for tourism and retail, I believe. Both the Bridge Plan Future Land Use Map and the upcoming Horizon 2045 Future Land Use Map designates this area as for commercial use. Again, if we move forward with this tonight, the, all these departments will provide a plan of services. plan of services to, to assess the impact of this annexation on our city services. And staff recommends approval of this request to proceed. As the property is adjacent to city limits and within the urban growth boundary, property aligns with the Horizon 2045 Future Land Use Map, and the proposal is supported by several Horizon Growth Management Plan objectives. Any questions?
Yeah. Is this in the tax incentive zone, the Boons Creek tax incentive zone, the 940 acres?
I'm not sure on the acreage, but it's the, the residential, or sorry, can't read my own handwriting, Regional Retail and Tourism Development District.
This is just to approve, to proceed.
Yes, ma'am.
I would move approval.
Just a second.
Ms. Lous.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
Ms. Ball? Commissioners, any comments?
Not.
School's back in session?
I was going to say, not only is it back in session, but I have a little scrimmage game tomorrow night in Greenville and Science Hill, at Science Hill Stadium, and two weeks from tomorrow, the real season starts, and I can't believe we're already doing that, so we're going.
Good. All right. We'll adjourn the meeting.